January 7, 2025 Bridgewater Township Planning Board Meeting is hereby called to order at 7:08. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6. On March 30, 2023, proper notice was sent to the Courier News and Star Ledger, filed with the clerk at the township of Bridgewater and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Please be aware of the planning board policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 and no new testimony will be taken after 10:00. Hearing assistance is available upon request. Accommodation will be made for individuals with a disability pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, provided the individual with a disability provides 48 hours' advance notice to the Planning Department Secretary before the meeting. It should be noted that this equipment is now available on-site and on-demand. I've been advised if the individual should require special equipment, other special equipment or services such as a cart transcriber, seven days' advance notice excluding weekends and holidays may be necessary. Please stand for the pledge.
Our country's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the board attorney, Mark Peck, will administer the oaths of office.
Do you have the oath forms?
I do not have the oath forms. We can administer the oaths and I'll be sure that they are signed with the clerk's office.
Okay, first up is Councilman Kirsch for the Class III member.
Plead after me. I-
I'm Michael Kirsch.
Do solemnly swear affirm-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey-
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States-
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state, county, and township-
And in this state, county, and township.
Under the authority of the people-
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly-
And justly perform-
All the duties of the office of-
All the duties of the office of-
Class III member of the planning board.
Class III member of the planning board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Class IV Environmental Commission for a three-year term, Mr. Magora.
I-
I, James Magora.
Do solemnly swear affirm-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state, county, and township.
And township.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully-
And I will faithfully-
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties-
And perform all the duties.
Of the office of Class IV Member Environmental Commission.
The reason of a Class IV Member Environmental Commission-
For the planning board.
For the planning board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. Wang.
I-
I, Henry Wang.
Do solemnly swear affirm-
Do solemnly swear affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state-
And this state.
County and township.
County and township.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully-
And I will faithfully-
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties-
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of-
Of the office of-
Class IV Member of the planning board.
Class IV Member of the planning board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to my best of my ability.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Vecchio.
I, Mauricio Vecchio.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state-
And in this state.
County and township.
County and township.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully-
And I will faithfully-
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly. Perform all the duties-
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of-
Of the office of-
Class IV Member of the planning board.
Class IV Member of the planning board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations. Thank you.
My name is Mr. Chowdery. I-
I, Irene Chowdery.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state, county and township.
County and township.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties-
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of-
Of the office of-
Alternate Number One to the planning board. According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Okay, that should be everybody, correct Nancy?
Correct.
Thank you. Now I guess call the roll of the board.
Mayor Mench is absent. Councilman Kirsch.
Here.
Chairman Vecchio.
Here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vecchio. For now. Magora.
Here.
Mr. Wang.
Here.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Here.
Mr. Pappas is absent for the record. Ms. Sikora.
Here.
Mr. Banga.
Here.
Mr. Chowdery. Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
And for the record, Catherine Sarmad, planner, William Burr, our engineer, and Mark Peck, board attorney, are also present. And at this point, open nominations for Chairperson.
I'll make a nomination that we continue under the outstanding leadership of Mauricio Vecchio, noting that it's a tough job. The coordination required ahead of the meeting, running the meetings, making sure everything runs smoothly, he's done an outstanding job, I'm confident. We'll see more of the same in 2025.
I'll second it.
Jim? Any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, we'll close the floor. Nominations, and I'll take a roll call vote on nomination of Mauricio Vecchio as Chair. Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang. Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
And Chairman Vecchio, you accept?
I accept. And thank you to the board and thank you, Councilman Kirsch, and to the board members. I look forward to 2025 to be a great year. I look forward to work alongside all of you. And yes, I agree, preparing for the meeting is not an easy task. However, I think the preparation also leads to some very good questioning on these nights, so thank you very much.
I'll turn over the balance of nominations to the Chair.
Okay, moving to Section 6B, we're looking for the election of a Vice Chairperson. I'd like to open nominations. I'd like to nominate Ashley Sikora as Vice Chair. She's done an outstanding job when she's chaired this planning board. She operates with integrity. She brings a keenness of insight to this board through her questioning, and I believe that this year will be no different. That's Mr. Chowdery.
Chairman Kirsch, I'm sorry. Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora. Yes, you accept?
Yes, I accept.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to Section 6C for the election of a Board Secretary. I'd like to open nominations for Board Secretary. I would like to nominate Nancy Probst to continue as our Board Secretary for 2025, acknowledging the terrific work that she's done, advising myself and the rest of the board in the preparation of each and every single one of our meetings. I thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
That's Ms. Sikora. Are there any other nominations? That will close nominations.
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
I accept, and thank you for your kind words.
Thank you. Moving to Section 6D for the election of an Assistant Board Secretary. I'd like to open nominations. I'd like to nominate Sonya Chartewitz as the election of Assistant Board Secretary to continue the work that she performed in 2024.
I second that.
That's Ms. Sikora. Are there any other nominations? That will close nominations.
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
I accept.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, moving to item number seven on our agenda. It's reorganization resolutions, appointment of board professionals. This evening, Mr. Peck, we will be appointing our professionals. The first will be Section 7A, the appointment of a board professional for a board attorney. That will be for Mark, our Peck Esquire. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Peck as our Board Attorney? That's Mr. Chowdery. Could I have a second?
I second.
That's Ms. Sikora. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Thank you very much, it's a pleasure representing the board. Look forward to a good 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Next is Section 7B for the appointment of a board professional in the board engineer role. Could I have a motion to appoint William Burr?
I'll motion.
That's Ms. Chartewitz. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
That's Ms. Sikora. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Moving to Section 7 for the appointment of a board professional for our board planner. Could I have a motion to appoint Catherine Sarmad?
I'll make that motion.
That's Ms. Sikora.
I'll second that.
That's Mr. Banga. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery. Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Sarmad. Section 7E for the appointment of a consulting planner. 7D, my apologies, for the appointment of a consulting planner. Would somebody like to appoint, make a motion to appoint Mr. Michael Sullivan?
I'll motion.
That's Ms. Chartewitz. Mr. Chowdery? Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery. Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Moving along, Section 7E will not apply. Section 7F, the designation of meeting dates. Ms. Probst, I'm going to relay this back to you as I believe you have the most current resolution.
There were two meeting dates that were eliminated from the list for 2025. I believe the copy that you received was a draft. So just for clarification, the resolution we're adopting does not include June 3 or November 4. If those are on the copy that you have there, just please disregard that copy.
Okay.
I'll distribute a new official meeting date tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, just for commentary, June 3 is in advance of the rescheduled New Jersey primary. At some point, we lose use of this room for early voting. We simply don't know exactly when that's going to be. And then November 4 is General Election Day. We typically do not have land use meetings those nights.
Thank you, Councilman Kirsch. And for the purposes of the public, I'll go ahead and recite those dates. And that will be for January 7, January 21, all dates 2025 unless otherwise noted, February 4, February 18, March 4, March 18, April 1, April 15, May 6, May 20, June 17, July 1, July 15, August 5, August 19, September 2, September 16, October 7, October 21, November 18, December 2, December 16, and January 6, 2026 for a reorg and regular meeting.
Chairman, we declare we'll adopt the resolution as amended.
Would somebody like to adopt-
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution, designate our meetings, dates, times, and place subject to the amendment we've discussed.
Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
That's Ms. Chartewitz. I have a roll call, please.
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery. Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, moving along to Section 7G, the designation of our official newspapers. Be it resolved by the Planning Board of the Township of Bridgewater that the Courier News and the Star Ledger are hereby designated as the official newspapers of the Planning Board for 2025 and are authorized to receive all notices of Planning Board meetings as required under the Open Public Meetings Act. Would anyone like to take the motion, make a motion to adopt this resolution? That's Mr. Chowdery, could I have a second, please? Mr. Banga, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Mr. Peck, unless there are any other items, I believe that concludes our reorganization for 2025.
It does.
Very good, I'll take a motion to close reorganization. Mr. Chowdery, could I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Chartewitz, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Kirsch.
Yes.
Mr. Magora.
Yes.
Mr. Wang.
Yes.
Chairman Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Chartewicz.
Yes.
Ms. Sikora.
Yes.
Mr. Banga.
Yes.
Mr. Chowdery. Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, we shall proceed with our regular meeting. At this time, I'd like to call any members of the public wishing to address the board on any matter not listed on tonight's agenda. Please feel free to come forward at this time. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move on to our board minutes. We have a set of minutes from October 1, 2024. Are any comments changed to the record? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the minutes for October 1, 2024?
I'll motion.
That's Ms. Chartewitz.
I'll second.
That's Ms. Sikora, could I have a roll call, please?
We can do those by voice vote if you prefer.
I'm sorry? Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next set of minutes are from October 15, 2024. Any comments changed to the record? Hearing none, could I take a motion?
I'll make a motion.
That's Ms. Sikora, could I have a second?
I'll second.
That's Ms. Chartewitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is a set of minutes from November 19, 2024. Any comments or changes to the record?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was not present at that meeting, so that should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Would anybody like to make the motion as amended? That's Mr. Chowdery. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
That's Ms. Chartewitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And moving along, I don't believe we have any resolutions this evening?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can, just so that the record is truly clear, on each roll call vote, I should also be noted as absent, not eligible. So I don't know if you need to just redo those minutes with that amendment? I apologize for not seeing that sooner.
You could, could you maybe clarify, I see Ms. Probst is-
I, I- Were you, did the minutes reflect that you were present and you were-
The minutes reflect that I was present, which we corrected, but each roll call vote states that I'm not eligible to vote. I was eligible to vote, I was absent.
Then you could just make a motion to amend the prior motion-
Okay.
Include the latest correction.
All right. But probably that needs to be done by someone that was at the meeting.
Who would like to make that motion? That's Mr. Chowdery, as amended. Who would like to second that?
I second.
That's Mr. Wang. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sorry for that inconvenience.
Thank you, Councilman, no problem. Okay, moving along, again, we don't have any resolutions this evening, and that will take us to our land development applications this evening. And the first we will be hearing this evening is Chick-fil-A, which is a continuance for 121724, Block 164, Lot 6.05, commonly known as 754 Route 202. And who is returning this evening to represent the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, members of the public. My name is Michael Silbert. I'm from the law firm DeFrancesco Bateman located Warren Township, New Jersey, and it is my privilege to return this evening representing the applicant, Chick-fil-A, Inc. I see a number, all familiar faces actually, I see a number, all familiar faces, actually, and I would just like to congratulate all of you for, for doing this important service to the Bridgewater community. Bridgewater's lucky, lucky to have you and welcome back in 2025. I'd also like to thank the board for agreeing to hear this application during their reorganization meeting. It means a lot to, to the applicant. And the board is aware, this is an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval. This is our fourth hearing on this application. We've appeared on October 15th, and we presented the operational testimony of John Martinez, our Senior Vice President of Development for Chick-fil-A. December 3rd, we presented the professional engineering and traffic testimony of Mr. Zachary Chaplin of Stonefield Engineering and Mr. Patrick Downey of Dynamic Traffic. And then, of course, most recently, on December 17th, we presented a revised concept plan incorporating feedback from the board, board's professionals. That was outlined in their supplemental review memo dated December 8th, 2024. So since our last hearing, the applicant submitted a revised site plan consisting of one, one sheet labeled C4.0, last revised December 20th, 2024. This revised site plan addresses the comments outlined in that supplemental review letter and incorporates the feedback provided during our December 17th hearing before the board. So the, the key revisions, and our engineer will testify to this shortly, is that we removed the partial bypass lane and replaced it with an escape driveway at the northeast corner of the site. That addresses any concerns related to a singular pinch point to provide an alternate means of egress out of the site. We also added Route 202 wayfinding signage at the intersection of the extension driveway in the pad site. This encourages right turns out of the site to mitigate traffic concerns related to Town Center Road. We also took the feedback from the board and, and installed a grass paver with a rollover malleable curb at the southwest corner of the site to enhance emergency access to the site. And then finally, I would just note that we revised the bulk standards table reflecting updated proposed signage and related variance relief. This revision eliminates the proposed, or originally proposed, side yard parking setback variance that was erroneously shown on the original site plan. So that variance is not needed. Tonight, our goal, of course, is to conclude the application. I intend to recall our engineer, Mr. Chaplin, to review the revised site plan for the record. After Mr. Chaplin's testimony, I will call the applicant's final witness, Mr. Matt Flynn. Mr. Flynn will provide the planning testimony necessary, necessary to justify the approval of this application. And before we proceed with our first witness, I'd like to briefly address the updated review memo from the township's fire marshal, Mr. Tom Scolera, dated January 1st, 2025. I'm proud to report that this memo confirms that the applicant has adequately addressed all of the fire marshal's initial requests that were detailed in the September 11th, 2024 memo, and that the fire marshal has no objections to the application at this time. So I think, before, before I start, I just wanted to, to thank the board. I think it's an opportunity to, to recognize the collaboration we've had over the previous three hearings. There were a, a lot of constructive and insightful suggestions throughout the, the process thus far, which has helped us to refine and, and improve the site plan. So I think it's a testament to, to what can be achieved. I hope the board will view it this way when, when developers and, and boards work together toward a, toward a shared vision. So I, I believe that the township will be very proud of this project, as should the board. So with that, I'll just remind you, Mr. Chairman, that our applicants were, I'm sorry, the witnesses were all sworn in 2024. I don't know if, if they have to be re sworn.
They're sworn for the duration of the hearing.
Excellent. So I'll just introduce our first witness, our engineer, Mr. Zachary Chaplin, to continue his engineering testimony and discuss what, what changes you see on that revised site plan sheet I referenced.
Thank you, Mrs. Silbert.
Good evening. Just want to reiterate and concur what Mr. Silbert said. I do think it's been, you know, a great process so far, and I think the board's had a lot of constructive feedback that we've been able to implement. So, you know, basically, what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of walk through some of the latest changes that have been made to the plan that were actually submitted to the board. The plan that's on the screen is essentially just a colorized version of that latest site plan that was already submitted. So I don't believe we need to mark it, as we haven't marked the previous renderings.
Yeah, that's, that's a colorized version of submitted. I think you're up to A9.
So there's really three main changes that we made to the plan. The first kind of follows that sketch that we showed at the last hearing where we added in that, that escape ability at the northeast corner of the pad site. Again, we don't intend to use this, really, just, it's just there in the event of an emergency, and that allows vehicles to get onto that internal roadway within the shopping center. We also added some green space as well. There used to be that third lane there, so reduction of impervious as a result of this change. The second change is a sign that's essentially right in front of our curb cut, that's going to say 202 with a right-hand turn arrow. So essentially, it's, it's not going to restrict people from making a left, but it's going to basically, you know, show people that they do have the ability to make the right-hand turn to get back onto 202 in either direction. And then lastly, and, and I thought this was a, was a great idea, you know, just that emergency grass paver type roadway, from the naked eye, it's not going to look like a driveway, so we're going to have grass pavers, you know, closest to Town Center Road, and then abutting that will be the actual sidewalk, and then from there, it'll just be like a depressed curb, so that in the event a vehicle needed to drive through the area, they could, but it's not going to appear like a driveway. It's going to look like grass pavers and sidewalk, and then a striped-out parking space. Hope, I'm hoping that with these changes, the board, just a little bit more comfortable with the circulation and traffic on site, and happy to answer any questions on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kirsch?
A couple, a couple of comment and a couple of questions. First, I do like, like the changes. I think it, it is an overall improvement. On the, the, I, I hope I got my directions right. Or maybe there's a, oh, here, on the northeast portion of the site, the escape driveway, i- is there signage from that feeder road that that is not an entrance?
Correct, there's do not enter signage, and we can even add striping as well that says do not enter.
Okay, all right. Because, you know, I'd hate to have someone real eager and think that that's a way to get, to get, to get forward even quicker.
Should we make that a condition, that it be striped and signed to prevent public access?
Deter public access?
Well, deter, right, deter, that's what I mean, from the roadway.
Yeah. Because I know that's our intention, we just want to make sure that that, that's executed. My sec, my second question, you know, the emergency presumably ambulance access, which hopefully will never be necessary, you know, that, that, that was my suggestion. I'm glad to see it. I'm glad to see that it works on the site in the event of an emergency, a medical emergency. It would allow us to get an ambulance or a police car to the front door of the restaurant very quickly. And then just a question about that sign, I think it's labeled as 6D like dog, talking about 202. I, I think our intention is to inform people that 202, their best route to 202 south is that way. While you could get to 202 north, I have concerns that if people do that, they could create some, some traffic challenges on the road. So I, I believe our, you know, look, you can get to 202 in either direction, but I think if we highlight on the, on the, on the sign that that is possibly a quicker, easier way to get to 202 south, I believe that's, that's our desire.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you, this is, uh, these are good improvements.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Chowdhury, sure?
Thank you for taking care of that 202 signs that were... And also, some people can have a double arrow sign, because, you know, basically, people can go to both 202 south and both directions. Otherwise, if you put one, I'm a newcomer, I can only go by this way. You're not restricted to go to 202 south in a left turn, also, so let them have it to both ways, 202 south.
Yep.
Yeah. You know, the, 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 look, the intention is basically, I, I think everybody knows you can go back to Town Center Drive. The intention is to divert at least some of the traffic to 202 south by going to the right. I don't know exactly how that's worded and encouraged. My overall spirit and intention is, is as a point of awareness that you can reach 202 20 south by going to the right. You know, that, that's my intention, not, it, it's more like a friendly suggestion than an absolute guidance on a sign. So, so again, how exactly that we execute that?
We could say, instead of like a double arrow, you can, you can put like alternate, you know, alt 202.
Maybe alt, something like that, yes. I, I, yeah, that, that, I believe that would accomplish what we're trying to, because, again, throughout this hearing, I've been concerned about, you know, that feeder road being a choke point, and to the extent that some number of people can realize, hey, wait a minute, I can avoid the choke point by making a right because I'm heading, you know, toward, toward 202 south. That's the intention. So I think if it's alt, alternate, something like that, that would definitely accomplish that. Because, you know, to, to, to Mr. Chowdhury's point, you can get there going this way, too. So, you know...
I'll go with that.
Okay, all right. That's, that's a good solution.
Do you review satisfaction of the board engineer?
That's all I was going to suggest, is I think if, if a condition was to work with Catherine and I, we can wordsmith wayfinding signage appropriately to accomplish the goal.
Okay.
I agree with Councilman Kirsch. We don't want to encourage people taking that route to then try to shoot across 202 to then go north. Let's let them go to Town Center, but the folks going south can use that as an alternate.
Correct.
We can come up with, with the appropriate language.
And then I guess also, you know, the signage on the escape driveway, you know, to, to our board professionals' satisfaction. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? The brass pavers in the buddy pad, I, I'm glad that you took that suggestion, incorporated that into the plan. Does that require any special maintenance on an annual basis, the brass pavers? I know sometimes those can get a bit compromised.
It's no different than like your lawn, you know, it, it needs to be maintained, but there's nothing too special about it.
Okay. Very good. Any questions from our professionals?
I know that the topic of tonight has mostly been the traffic and the changes to the plan, but I just wanted to touch one thing that I forgot to bring up, or just kind of came to me as I was re-reviewing the plans, was there was a discussion last meeting about the landscaping and some of the additions that they had based on the utilities. And there, it's not shown on this, the resubmission sheet, but it was on the old, the prior set of plans that were dated November 8th. Sheet C9 shows those, these utility boxes, and I know the one adjacent, closer to the building, at the rear of the building, did have some landscaping around it, but the other one closer to that site entrance is larger and didn't have anything, any landscaping on the landscape plan around it. So I just wanted to ensure that if it's possible, I don't know what act, what kind of access is needed from the utility, but there probably should be some sort of screening around it, if possible, if it is protruding, just to, for aesthetics.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to accommodate that if we can.
Okay, thank you. As far as the, the design, I think the applicant has addressed the supplemental review. I know that the board didn't get, get a chance to see that before last meeting, but this does address kind of the concerns we had, Mr. Burr and I had, and I'll let him speak on his part, but, and that Mr. Kirsch had brought up about, the alternative papers, I think they did adequately address it. And I do think it, it provides that outlet that we were looking for as far as the drive-thru access. So that's all I had for this, for this witness.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Catherine's point, I do think it's an improved plan. I think they've addressed several of the concerns that the board raised at prior meetings. Couple, couple quick questions. So, you know, I think it's a welcome addition, the ambulance or the emergency grass paver access, but in doing that, I think you lose a total of two spaces, correct? So you go from parking spaces or one?
One space.
So one? You go from 42 to 41 or 43 to 41? I thought you were at 43. It'd be 43 to 42. Okay. The only reason I raised it, I just want to make sure that you're still compliant with the parking requirements, and just in terms of the need on this site, you have no, no issues with losing that one or two spaces, correct?
Yeah, I think I went from 42 to 41. I think the, what it is, is we're able to kind of use the striped area, where we previously had a striped area, it was five feet wide, and then a parking space, so now we can kind of consolidate.
Okay. We already talked about the wayfinding signage. The only other question or comment I have is recognizing that this was just one sheet that was updated as a condition, the rest of your site plan sheet or set would then be updated as well?
Yes.
Right, if this is approved? Okay. All right, very good. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burr? This time, I'd like to open up to any members of the public that wish to ask any questions regarding Mr. ... Yes, please feel free to come to the record. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Penny Wolf. I live at One Tiffin Place, and this is a really bad place to put this Chick-fil-A. I...
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, Ms. Wolf, this is just to ask...
Questions? Okay.
...of his testimony.
Can I come back?
When they're done?
Okay.
You can then, you know, make a speech or give your opinion or...
Okay. All right.
This is just to ask questions, though, of...
Okay. No, I don't have a question, because...
Right. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Okay, that'll close the public portion for this witness. Mr. Silbert?
Mr. Chairman, we have our final witness, if you have a...
I, I don't believe, Mr. ...
Yeah, you don't look familiar there, so... First, could you state and spell your name for the record?
Yeah, Matthew Flynn, F-L-Y-N-N.
Oh, okay. And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in connection with this hearing will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Flynn, would you mind putting on the record your educational background, professional background in the field of planning?
Sure. My education comes from Rutgers. I have my master's degree in planning and public policy. I have my professional planner's license in the state of New Jersey, as well as the national licenser, which is the AICP License for Planners. I have testified before the zoning board for Bridgewater. This is my first time before this board, as well as over 100 other boards across the state.
Does anyone have any objections to Mr. Flynn's qualifications?
Objection.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Yeah.
You can go ahead.
Sure. So just to remind the board what we're voting on this evening, we are looking at a property that's in the M1 limited manufacturing zone. We're talking about an existing shopping complex. We're proposing to construct a new permitted use in the zone, which is this drive-through Chick-fil-A. Actually, there are about six specific types of uses that are listed as being permitted for a shopping complex, and drive-through is one of those permitted uses. Since the October 15th hearing, we have been through several iterations of the plan. There has been some great feedback and back and forth between the board and the applicant, and I think we've arrived at, I think, a satisfactory plan at this point. So again, just to remind the board the, the variances that we're seeking, none of which rise to the level of D, we're not requesting a use variance, so we're looking at all C variances here. To start, we're looking at a front yard setback for the parking, not the building. That's to Route 202, essentially the same location as the existing parking, slightly closer, but I'll get to, to that in a moment. Loading area is not provided, whereas one is, is required. I think the testimony was provided two hearings ago regarding the operations and the use of the parking area and how loading is going to occur. Building signage, total area of 153.5 square feet, whereas 100 square feet is the maximum. If you added 26 square feet for the welcome to Bridgewater sign, you would be at 179.5 square feet, if we counted that one. And then number of trees, we have a deficit of 13 trees, but we will work with the town's professionals in order to get trees where we can on the site. I think the site plan speaks for itself. We have put trees essentially where we can get them, except for in the front of the property, and I think it's, if we look at what the property looks like, if we're driving by, I think it looks pretty intentional that there are no trees in that front area in order to accommodate visibility of that main shopping center sign. So to get into the statutory criteria for the relief, I think we can look to the C2 balancing test, whereby the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh any detriments. I think all the relief that we're seeking this evening is really the result of accommodating this drive-through, which is beneficial in that it does promote convenience for patrons that might be elderly, have disabilities, might be traveling during inclement weather, all those sorts of benefits that we get with drive-through uses, which goes towards Purpose A, promotion of the general welfare. Purpose G, from the municipal land use law, is variety of uses in appropriate locations. Again, this is a permitted use in the zone. We're essentially talking about replacing a, a food use with another food use at this location. Purpose I, desirable visual environment, again, not introducing anything new from a massing standpoint. If we compare this to what was last there, we actually are looking at a reduction in building mass, as well as additional landscaping. So visually and aesthetically, this is going to be less intense than what was there previously. And finally, Purpose M of the municipal land use law is efficient use of land. Again, we're working with an existing developed piece of land. The, the variances we're requesting are not a substantial departure from what's out there today. Nothing is going to constitute a overdevelopment of the property or an overintensification of, of the site. In terms of the negative criteria, I think really the crux of this application is, does it work? And I think the, the feedback from the board really addresses the, the public impacts in terms of safety and efficiency, how the property works in terms of circulation in and out. This is really minor relief that's being requested, again, to accommodate that drive-through component. To the extent we are requesting a new building, really, all the building mass requirements are actually met in terms of building setbacks, building coverage, FAR, building height, all of those requirements are complied with. And finally, in terms of signage, I would say that all the signage really serves a purpose. This is a highly visible location with essentially circulation happening all around this building, so we think that the signage that's proposed is appropriate, and like I said, each sign And like I said, each sign really does serve a purpose, accommodating that visibility from all sides. So with that, I think, again, this has been a, a beneficial process between the, the board and the applicant. I think what we're left with here is an appropriate application that fits well on the site, and none of the C relief rise to the level of being a substantial detriment to the public or to the zone. In fact, I think this is going to be a vast improvement over what's there aesthetically, as well as providing a beneficial use. So with that, I, I think I can close unless there's any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn, for your testimony. I'd like to open up to the board for any more questions regarding Mr. Flynn's testimony.
I have two questions. First, Suzanne, can you zoom out slightly on the image that everybody's seeing? Or is that the, is that the, the edge of it?
Do I do that?
Yep, right there, okay.
Yeah, actually.
Perfect, that's exactly, oh, I'm sorry, I thought Suzanne was the magic, the magic holder.
Is that good?
Yeah, that's perfect. The reason for, so what I was, what I, what I want to ask about is the location of what I'll call that frontline, front row of parking. And you stated it was a few feet closer than current. Looks to be a few feet closer than essentially on the Verizon site, which is just to the, if I have my directions right, to the east, correct?
Correct.
Okay. My question is, do you still feel there is sufficient space in that grass area? In the unfortunate event that, that a car, you know, there's an accident, a car leaves the roadway, there, there is still sufficient room for that car to come to rest without hitting or landing on cars in, in your parking lot? And, and the reason I ask the question is, not at this location, but over by the Bridgewater diner, from time to time in a particularly dangerous corridor on 22 East, some accidents occur in that corridor, cars leave the roadway, and cars end up on top of cars that are, you know, parked, uh, uh, close to the highway. It appears to me visually that there, there is a pretty considerable buffer, but I'm just interested in, from a planning standpoint, you know, obviously if someone's at a massive rate of speed, the answer is probably no. But if they're at a usual rate of speed and there was an accident and a car were to leave the roadway, is there likely to be sufficient buffer so that the car would come to rest in that, uh, uh, green space and not land on a car?
Yeah, I understand. And I, and I know that our engineer just sat back up here, but I will say that we're really talking about a difference of less than six feet from what's permitted. So when we look at what's permitted of 25 feet, we're talking about 19.3 feet. Not a substantial difference. Okay. That's true, yeah. So if we look at the plan that's on the, on the screen there, we can actually see the, the property line, this black line. And there's actually some additional distance which accommodates the sidewalk below that. So the 19.3 feet that we have actually doesn't contain that, so there is some additional space as well.
Okay, so, and, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's possible to answer this with exactness or just a general feeling. So if it's 19 feet, then it's at least 30, maybe even 35 feet. Again, unless there's some extraordinary speed occurring, you know, is it reasonable to assume that if a car did leave the roadway due to an accident, that it, it, it would land and, and stop somewhere in that buffer area and, and not make it all the way down to the parking lot?
Yeah, I would say to the extent the intent of that requirement is to avoid situations like that, I would say that the, the space that we have between the actual parking and the actual roadway would meet that intent.
Okay. And, and, you know, again, I, you know, I hate to use the experience at another site, but, you know, it is still within our township and we, we do see instances like that.
Yeah.
And, you know, to the greatest extent possible, I would be concerned, you know, that, that under normal and usual circumstances, that would not happen here. It seems as though that's the case.
Yeah, and also we do have vegetation to the extent that might have a, have an impact.
Okay. All right. And then I guess the second question I have, and I know we, we asked this earlier in the hearing. This, this, this site, this site's a little tight. You know, I, I mean, I think that's a, a fair statement. And, and the commentary was made, I think this was from the traffic engineer, that sometimes they are engaged on a project and have to deliver challenging news back to the applicant. They need to say, "Sorry, you know, you, you really kind of need a few hundred or, or more square feet to really make this thing work." In your judgment, would you say that this, this site, it, it's tight, but it is sufficient for this, for this use?
Absolutely, yeah. And we, you know, we, we looked at all of those zoning requirements, again, for building massing, for coverage, et cetera. And we feel that what we have here is appropriate, given that we are able to accommodate additional landscaping, things of that nature. So we're not actually maximizing the use of the space and we're still able to, I think, get something that's efficient and, and works on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? Any questions perhaps from our professionals?
Yeah, I have just one. Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I think you provided a good overview of the relief required. And I just wanted to point out, so the, the relief that's being sought for the front yard setback for the parking is 19.3 feet, correct?
Yes.
Where 25 feet is required.
Correct.
I believe we heard from the engineer's testimony that the, the driveway or the drive aisle width was increased to create better separation and circulation. So it's increased from generally what would normally be 24 feet to 30 feet?
You're asking if that's changed since the last?
No, no, I'm just asking if that's factual, if that's true.
Yes.
So if the, if you, if my math's correct, if that was a 24-foot drive aisle, then the front yard parking setback could be complied with, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, do you believe that the, the trade-off between the two, so the variance request for the 19 feet compared to the 30-foot drive aisle is warranted?
I do. And again, looking at the additional space that's not included, again, I think it would be erroneous or superfluous to, to force that when it's not necessary.
Do you think that there would be any kind of visual or functional impact on the front yards, on the front yard area to have, for the additional five feet or the deviation from the five feet that, or five and a half feet that's being requested?
Yeah, I think one thing the board can look at is the fact that we are looking at a six-lane roadway. So, you know, one thing that setbacks try to mitigate is having buildings close together on opposite sides of the street, and in this case, there is substantial distance built in by way of that six-lane roadway. So visually, I would say it's not going to result in a crammed-in effect or anything like that.
Okay. And presently, there's no landscaping at the site frontage, correct?
I believe not.
It's just, it's just grass, correct?
I believe you're correct.
And the applicant is proposing to put some shrubs in front of the, the parking lane, correct?
Yes.
Will that have any kind of visual impact or mitigating effect on the variance?
Absolutely, yeah, positive impact.
Okay. Thank you very much, I have other questions for the planner.
Mr. Burr.
No questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. I believe throughout the course of the last few hearings, we answered most of our questions. I'm not sure if we discussed snow removal. Would you be able to walk us through exactly what a, a major inclement weather would look like? Where would the snow be stored? Where would it be transported to? I believe there was parking spaces in the adjacent lot above. Could you provide a little testimony to what that would look like, that scenario?
Sure. I think, you know, really to be dependent on the amount of snow. I think if it was minimal, you know, probably just can go into the perimeter landscaped areas where it can fit. Beyond that, we may work with the property owner to find parking spaces or other areas on-site. And if all else fails, we would work with a, a vendor to, to move the snow offsite if we needed to. But we would look to keep the site clear and not, you know, impact circulation or on-site parking.
Okay. I believe we also discussed that a fire truck would not be able to handle the turning radius. Would a snow removal truck be able to handle that radius?
It would be able to maneuver within the site. It just wouldn't be able to go through the drive-through because of the canopies.
Right. Would it be able to make use of the newest egress access that was provided in the newest plans?
Yeah, it could, it could go in that route.
Okay. So would be hypothetically speaking, if that had to be cleared, a snow removal truck would be able to enter the drive-through and exit out of the northern egress?
Yes, yes. Okay. We can, there's like a little island there, but we can actually modify that just so that it has that ability.
It was one of those questions I had been holding on to till the end, but here we are in our third meeting now. And I just wanted to make sure there was access for a snow removal truck to get through there, given the fact that we're talking about constricted spaces and whatnot. So if we could make that potentially a condition for that to be widened, or potentially, where's that island that you speak of?
It's right abutting like the, the parking row closest to the canopy.
Okay.
The other thing to note is, you know, snow removal vehicles vary in size, so, you know, they do have smaller ones that we could use that wouldn't need that. But obviously, the larger ones, you know, in terms of height, those would be the ones that would have challenges with the canopies. But I'm happy, I think, I think it's, it's a-
Directly under the canopy though, wouldn't it be shielded from the smell?
Directly under the canopy, it would be shielded, but in between the canopies, it wouldn't. I do think there is merit to reducing the island just a little bit to give a little bit of room in case there was that type of vehicle there. We can, we can make that.
Okay. Mr. Burr, do we feel that would be adequate to address that type of need?
Yeah, I do, I think it's a good suggestion.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for Ms. Sarmad. So we're in the midst of a master plan review. So I'm trying to see big picture here along with what's going on in this site. Drive-through is permitted here. How do we, we define a drive-through as you park your car and get food at your car? Or do we define it as a window? Because if we define it as a window, Chick-fil-A has basically broken that, that mold. So I'm just curious how, for future reference, not for this, how we define drive-through and do we potentially need to change our definition of drive-through?
I'm not, I'd have to look that up.
Okay. I don't think it's, it's not relevant for this hearing, but I did, you know, it's on my mind as we're in the midst of a master plan review. You know, I don't question that it's permitted here. Okay. I mean, really, my question is beyond this hearing.
We don't have a drive-through definition, we only have a definition for drive-in restaurant, which is ambiguous as to whether it means like a movie drive-in style or if it means a drive-up or a drive-through as we know it. But you're, you're correct in that drive-throughs are changing. Chick-fil-A is one of the different models of where it's not a drive-through pickup window, but there's plenty of drive-throughs. So it is something that we will recognize as part of the master plan. I'm not sure what the future holds for zones and other drive-through areas.
Because I, I'd hate to see us define it as a window and then someone's like, "We don't have a window." You know, just, I, I want to make sure that we're adapting to the modern standards associated with drive-through behavior.
Yeah. And our, our drive-in definition currently looks very generally in that it doesn't talk about windows, it just talks about food that's ready for pickup and isn't designed to not necessarily be eaten inside the building.
Okay.
It's pretty, it's pretty open.
Okay. Thank you for that indulgence.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? Mr. Banga.
Great question. I think this came up at the first hearing. The monument sign, it would block the visibility of that big monument sign for the center. So that's why we look to have like the shrubs there instead and then pretty much maximize our, our shade trees everywhere else we possibly could.
It was to, so that the, you're saying to the monument sign it's blocked?
Right, exactly. That's why, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Banga. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public to question Mr. Flynn and his testimony. Please feel free to come forward at this time. Hearing none, hearing none, that'll close the public portion for this witness. Thank you. Mr. Silbert. Do you have any closing comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have too many things to say to conclude this application. I think I said a lot of the things that I wished to have conveyed to the board during my opening remarks. Again, a lot of good questions and I hope that the, the feedback and the testimony provided from the applicant's witness was sufficient to justify the minimal relief required in connection with this application. It's been said, and I'll just say it again, it is a permitted use. This was part of, of the vision of, of Bridgewater dating back to the late 90s and through the 2000s. And I believe and I hope that this is an application that Bridgewater will be proud of. I think many residents in Bridgewater are looking forward to having a delicious Chick-fil-A sandwich. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board, board professionals, for listening to our application over the past four hearings. And that'll conclude our application.
Thank you, Mr. Silbert. Any members of the public that wish to comment on any testimony heard this evening from Mr. Chaplin or Mr. Flynn?
Or they can just make a general statement of opinion on the application.
Please feel free to come forward at this time.
Yeah, that would be you.
And again, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Penny Wolf and I live at One Tiffin Place. And I really, I live right by that-
We're gonna have to swear, yeah.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in the course of this hearing will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Now you can-
Okay. I live in the Bradley Garden section, so I use that shopping center very frequently. And I can tell you right now, some days I sit between two and three lights just to get into that shopping center. And it's going to be, I have also been hit at that shopping center, right? Coming, coming south towards Flemington. I've been trying to get into the shopping center and I've been rear-ended by somebody. So I'm very familiar with all the traffic. I also think that I've been by the one in Flemington, the one in South Plainfield, one in Pennsylvania. This is not a place that people go in normally. They all do that wraparound. And it's busy all the time. And the problem is, traffic going into the Wegmans, I always call it the Wegmans Shopping Center, is busy all the time in the morning. It's got all the construction guys at Home Depot all day long. The only time it's not busy is probably after 10 o'clock at night when I've been going by. You can really move in there without no problem. I just think having the drive-through is a real problem. Because I just think that it's going to cause problems. Because people that try to come out where Ruby Tuesday's used to be can't always get down because people are coming down all those three lanes, turning left and two turning, turning, two turning left and one turning right there. They don't get out very often. And so where are they going to, all these people that are in there getting their food and it will be all day long? I've been by, like I said, three others. It's busy all the time. And especially with people going in maybe to Home Depot early in the morning, they're gonna stop for coffee or, you know. And people after they shop at Wegmans will go through the drive-through to get. So it's not going to be, it's going to be a problem. And I've seen accidents there besides the one I've had. So the only thing is, I know this is, I'm coming in late, I was at your last meeting, but I couldn't stay. You're gonna have to put an officer there because you're going to have traffic issues. And if it gets heated, then there'll really be some problems. Because it's just, it would be better if you put it where TGI Fridays is. I understand this is a problem, but this only has one way out and in, basically. You can go in, I guess, to the Olive Garden if you come down going south. But there is, this is basically the only way in and out for most of these cars. And you've got people coming up from Home Depot and you can't turn from where you went, like from Party City and Wegmans. That's always a constant. I mean, and during the day, like I said, I can sit through three traffic lights at 11 o'clock in the morning before I can get in. And that's two lanes going in to that shopping center. And during the holidays, it's a disaster. I mean, I just feel that this is not a good idea to have that place there. I know people really want Chick-fil-A, but I think there might be a better site because we are gonna have problems. And I know- And I know people that I know they're upset. Some people are excited about it, but some people are upset that the traffic is really bad on 202 right now. Somehow, there's a lot of tractor trailers coming up and down there constantly now. There didn't used to be. But the traffic on 202, even at 10 o'clock in the morning, is heavy anymore. So I just, as a person who lives nearby and goes in that shopping center, it's gonna cause me great grief. And I'm gonna have to figure out whether I shop at 10 o'clock at night, or I shop at 6 o'clock in the morning, but then I'm gonna have to deal with the Home Depot people. So that's my opinion, and I know other people in Bridgewater, yes, they're excited, but there's a lot of people that aren't happy. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, throughout this hearing, there's been a substantial amount of conversation about traffic and how we're gonna get people safely in and out of the site, and are people gonna do bypasses? Are people, you know, what I keep, keep expressing is the concern about leaving-
Yeah.
-the, the site. I, I'm not that concerned about getting people on. I'm more concerned about getting people off. You know, are people gonna leave the site, make that left, there's, isn't more than a few-car queue? Then you gotta make the left. Around the holidays, as you pointed out, that road backs up all the way and around to, to Wegmans. You know, we, we've discussed that throughout the hearing. And I, I, I hear you.
Yep.
I, I am, I empathize with you. I look at it from the standpoint of, you know, are we creating situations where there are gonna be accidents? Are we gonna create a circumstance where people are gonna go out the exit down by, um, you know, on the, near the Olive Garden, and then they're gonna try to cut across? I'm hoping they don't, but you know, unfortunately, drivers make their own decisions. I think in this case, and you know, perhaps our, our attorney can chime in on this, while your point of view is absolutely valid, and all the questions that we've asked have attempted to alleviate this, I don't know that the site's gonna have too much success is a criteria for us to deny it from a legal standpoint.
I understand, but maybe if there's an access where you don't let the people take, where like Ruby Tuesday's is, you cut out right there, make them go all the way down by the mattress place and come out that way. Because that would alleviate-
Well, we, well, we, and we, we talked about that. We talked about that as a behavior that people may, may undertake. You know, the, the, there was also commentary about how people might figure out, okay, I gotta go to Home Depot, I wanna go to Chick-fil-A, you know, which order am I gonna do it in? Well, you're gonna do it in whichever order offers least resistance. The other reality from where I sit is that if this, if this site becomes a victim of its own success, you know, people, people are gonna, are gonna moderate their behaviors, and you know, maybe they'll be like, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go to Chick-fil-A, but I'm not going near there on a Saturday. You know, and, and that's just, that's a consequence that, that the operator would, would need to work through.
And I understand that, but it's also, it's gonna be all the time. The only day it will be okay is because they're closed on Sunday. So you're then pushing people that need to get groceries or need to get to Home Depot that don't want to fight the whole thing. And you know, you're gonna, either gonna go, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be a problem. And all I can suggest, if you are gonna go through it, which I'm sure you will, is that you put a police officer there for the first, you know, month and a half.
That, that was actually also discussed was as part of, of the launch plan, and if I get any of this wrong, you know, please, please correct me, but as part of the launch plan, Chick-fil-A locations typically are very successful, and they do typically pay for, they pay at their expense for additional, uh, uh, traffic guidance as needed. So that, that is a usual and known consequence. The other thing that they stated is they bring in extra staff from existing locations who know their, you know, who, who know the operation. So, you know, I, I hear you, and I've shared these concerns. I've asked a substantial number of questions throughout this hearing. It just, you know, you know, I kinda asked the open-ended question of our attorney. Your concern is heard, it's absolutely valid. I'm not sure, though, that we have the ability to say to anyone, this thing seems like it's gonna be too, too successful, sorry, you can't build it there. Am I correct?
Yeah, and you can't use existing conditions as a reason to deny an application. You know, if you say, hey, traffic's already heavy there, this is going to add to the traffic, that's not satisfactory.
Just know you're gonna inconvenience the people around it.
No.
If you, if you heard the testimony of Mr. Martinez, I, he had conveyed to the board that it's equally as important to Chick-fil-A that the site functions safely, efficiently, because Chick-fil-A's success at this location is tied to the fact that if people don't feel comfortable coming to the, to the property, the, the restaurant is gonna, is gonna suffer. So I think that there, our interests are aligned with, in some respect, in the sense that this restaurant's success is, again, contingent upon them being able to manage the traffic on the site and out of the site in an efficient manner.
Yeah. The only thing is, I, I see that, but when I see people do that, you know, I've seen it in Flemington, I've seen it in South Plainfield, where they do the, you know, the wraparound. You're going, where are you gonna put all those extra people that are coming in off of 202 that wanna get in there? You know, I mean, yeah, you have 18 cars, obviously, that you could probably fit around there, right?
Much more, and I'm not gonna detail the entire testimony that was already given.
But opening day, you're gonna have-
Opening day, the queuing lane, that was previously testified to, is gonna be expanded. It's gonna be much larger than I believe the, the 39 that's provided. But we're, we're also with Chick-fil-A, as was previously presented, and I don't want to reiterate all that, the testimony, we have people that are outside, taking orders, directing traffic, just in ordinary conditions versus other, you know, drive-through establishments. They don't have anything like that. So if, if you listen to the testimony from the YouTube videos, you'll see that Chick-fil-A makes a, a strong effort to ensure that the site is, is working in an efficient manner to ensure there isn't a queuing issue, and I think we satisfied that.
We're getting a little, the, the purpose of this segment of the hearing is, you know, for the public to provide their opinions. It's not a debate or a-
Oh, I understand.
-replowing ground that's already been plowed, so.
All right. Thank you for letting me say my piece.
Sure thing.
Yes, well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one other item that I wanted to talk about. So I see that there's a walkway on Town Center Road. I'm, I'm wondering what, that seems to me like asking for somebody to get hit by a car. I'm just being very honest. Like, I see this right here, top area, and I can't, I don't know how to describe it, really. But you have it here, entering in, so you're gonna have cars coming in, cars coming out. And I'm wondering why that walkway isn't closer to the Raymore Flanagan on the other side? I thought we talked about that very early on. And it seems to me that when you're taking a look at it, you know, we're talking about this traffic being an issue, if, let's say, there is an overflow opportunity where people need to park on their side, and now you're asking them to walk across an already busy intersection, you know, and if we don't have, like, you know, police presence, you know, our resume has requested here, that's asking for somebody to get hit by a car, whereas and if somebody, if, if it's closer to the Raymore Flanagan towards where I thought we talked about, which I guess is that, that other exit or for the, you know, where the TGI Fridays, you know, there's the initial entrance, and then the other exit, which is the emergency exit, I guess we're, we're calling it, you know, can we put that walkway closer to that side so it's avoiding that Town Center Road traffic?
So are you talking about the, the crosswalk that's on the northwest portion?
Yes.
Okay. So I, do you want to take that?
Sorry, and just, your concern is that it's too close to the road?
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be, there's gonna be traffic coming in, traffic going out. That, that is like the primary choke point for this site, is, in my, in my opinion. I'm not an expert, you guys are the experts. But if, and I'm, I'm wondering, because I think we, when we initially started having the conversations with Chick-fil-A, it was closer to, uh, I don't know how to describe it, like further west, if we're, or east? Like towards the, towards the, the right side of Raymore Flanagan.
Or the east.
Mr. Banga, you are correct. The original iteration of the plan that, that was submitted to the board, the, the walkway was actually very close to where the proposed outlet is now, and it was moved in the subsequent November, or October or November redesign, it was moved over to that area. So you're correct.
So I'm wondering if we can keep it in that same area? If we, if we're asking the traffic to, let's say, for example, make a right out of, if it, if it is considered an emergency lane, which I don't think is gonna be utilized, if, based on your testimony, people are gonna be making a right out of there, there's less likely of somebody to get hit by a car, potentially, if we're asking people to make a right, if, if, if in the instance of an emergency that they need to leave Chick-fil-A from that, that access point, and allowing somebody to walk across just seems a more, like a better feasibility than to ask them to park across the street and now potentially ask them to walk across, walk all the way to the edge of Town, Town Center Road, across this busy area, which you're gonna have cars coming in and coming out. I'm just wondering if you guys can take that into consideration, because that, that just doesn't seem very feasible.
Well, I think you wanna have the crosswalk where cars are basically stopped. You know, if you have it more mid-block, you could have vehicles that don't see people or, you know, you're making a turn, you don't know there's a crosswalk there. So we purposely moved it to this location, because it's gonna be much more visible for both vehicles that are turning into the site and then vehicles who are leaving the site. Where we had it previously, as you're turning in, it's gonna be harder to see it. It's more like in the middle of a drive aisle rather than right at a point of, of stop. So I think that was the intention. I think we're looking to just, at that point is, is like a stop where people are going to have to stop anyway, and that's, you know, a logic point to have a crosswalk where you cross the street.
I get that, but like, let's say, I don't know how, you know, if you look at 202, all the way to, I'm gonna call it choke point, that's not a lot of cars. And if somebody has to stop, you're gonna have a lot of rear ends. Like, if, if someone's coming down 202, right, and they're pulling in, sorry, and they're pulling in to make a right here, and now you have somebody crossing the street, and now they have to stop right there, you're gonna have car one, car two, car three, it blocks up the entire Town Center Road. That's just my opinion, right? And I, and you guys have the experts. But if now, if somebody's, you know, and if, and if we really think that this, this site is gonna get the amount of traffic that it is, which, you know, probably you're gonna have a lot of people parking and, and whatnot, potentially, and if, if this overflow area, which, you know, is the Raymore Flanagan parking lot, is what I'm thinking, and if you have people coming, and, and, and now you're gonna have to have people stopping, this Town Center Road from 202 to, to this area doesn't seem like a very long space.
I could add something to that very quick as well. There's only a stop sign coming out of that secondary road onto the Town Center Road. There's no stop sign or anything turning right from Town Center Road going north.
Right, but you're gonna slow down to make the right-hand turn. So it's a natural point where you're gonna, you're basically gonna slow down. It's, it's a two-lane road, right? So like, if a car obviously needs to stop for pedestrian traffic, a car could theoretically get behind it. I mean, it's probably 100, 200 feet away from the intersection, maybe more than that, probably 300 feet. So I don't think you're gonna have like, like a backup per se. I also think there's enough room to have a vehicle almost turn into that space without even blocking the second lane. I mean, I, I understand your point. I totally get it. We're trying to make sure that we're safe here, there's pedestrians crossing. I mean, just looking at it like carefully, I think this is a natural spot to have a crosswalk. I think, like I said before, on one side, you're gonna have a stop sign, and on the other side, you're naturally need to slow down, and you're gonna have that visibility right there to see if people are crossing. If we move it, I think that's where cars are starting to like, they don't, they're not anticipating a stop, right? Like, as soon as you kind of like make a turn, you're like starting to speed up. So if you're not turning into Chick-fil-A, you might start to speed up, and all of a sudden, you have a crosswalk. So I do, I, I understand the thought process, but I do think we have it in the preferred location here, just from a safety standpoint.
I think there's more likely of people speeding up in, in the area that it is now. If you did have a crosswalk where it originally was proposed, and if you have some signage saying crosswalk or something along those lines, people are gonna naturally slow down.
I mean, if that's, if, if the board feels very strongly about that, we can-
How our planners and our, and the engineer feel about-
Or even a secondary crosswalk, and maybe a speed, and maybe a speed hump or something.
We're literally just discussing, yes, that the, the, the crosswalk at this point, because there is sidewalk access, is appropriately located. I do agree with Mr. Banga, though, that there's, there's more going on there that makes it more unsafe for pedestrians, and that's not a crosswalk that's not gonna go unused. That's intended for their employees to walk across from the overflow parking in the adjacent lot. So it's not just a crosswalk for the sake of a crosswalk. People will use it. And for that reason, Mr. Bird and I were just talking, and I'll let him also give his piece, but I think the original, or some semblance of where the original one was located is not a bad idea. You know, it's not, it's not, it's an internal roadway, so it's, it's, it is a mid-block cross, but I do think that it could still provide a more comfortable pedestrian connection for people who don't want to be involved in kind of the chaos of the turns and the movements and cars coming and going. So I, I don't, you know, even, I know Mr. Chaplin is talking about maybe visibility or cars expecting it. Maybe we put up a typical crosswalk sign up, too. Maybe we layer that crosswalk with a few layers of thermoplastic paint, make it a little bit raised, so it is more apparent. And I think that would go a long way.
Well said.
Thank you, Ms. Sarmad. Would there be appropriate signage indicating that there's a crosswalk there or leading up to that point as well? Like on Town Center Drive, perhaps, we could put a sign further-
Yes, we can, we can add signage. We can do a thermoplastic paint, for sure.
Well, I think there's two questions. I think one is, where is it gonna be? And then what's the signage gonna be?
Well, I think the sign is the typical crosswalk sign, the MUTCD sign. It's a yellow sign, it's got a person walking, it's a rectangle, diamond shape, whatever. I think that goes adjacent to where the crosswalk entrance is. I don't think it has to be lit, or, you know, what, some of those have the blinking lights. I don't think it necessarily rises to that level, but it would give it more visibility if there was one of those signs there. And I think because they've added the driveway entrance, I'm not sure how the original configuration, if it conflicts with that, but I, you know, I think somewhere adjacent to that would be, would be appropriate. Again, they are providing a linkage to the parking lots. The original one showed disturbance along that kind of parking island area into the next parking lot to the north, so probably somewhere in that area. So it doesn't, it won't take away any parking spaces, it'll just add kind of a pathway on that, on the existing island area. But I, I think that, similar to how we've treated other things, if the board feels comfortable, that Bill and I could, could approve the final-
I already, I have it, that signage identifying the crosswalk, the design and location of those to the satisfaction of the board.
Yeah, if the board's comfortable with that, it'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. The other thing that, that, that dawned, this is where I, I thought we were going, was the, the crosswalk that concerns me is the one right along 202, because there's a constant stream of cars making some kind of a turn in, into this site or leaving the site. I'm not aware that there's any walk, don't walk, or anything like that. I, I mean, is that the existing condition today, that there's a, a crosswalk from essentially the east to the west across Town Center Road, essentially right at 202?
There's a, there's a curb ramp, and basically the sidewalk ends, and, you know, as part of this project, we've submitted the DOT, and they've made these requests. So as part of their requests, they've asked for the crosswalk, which, again, is their jurisdiction, and then also the sidewalk that we're showing along our frontage, you know, that was shown for their request.
I, I'd be concerned that until and unless you wanna start putting in walk, don't walk on that traffic light, which I don't think is gonna be desired, because then it's gonna make the, the, the car traffic worse. I mean, you're taking your life in your own hands if you're gonna try to walk across that. That's where I thought you were headed.
Well, there's no, we were, you know, William and I were talking about that, actually, and we were gonna get to it at some point, but I was trying to fight this, check out this battle first over here, because I feel like, you know, that to me was a, was a big concern. But we were looking at, and if, and if you look at at least the 2023 Google from June, there is no crosswalk existing there, to your point, Council.
I mean, I mean, if we, if we hatch that out as a crosswalk, you're encouraging a very dangerous behavior.
There's a, so there's a crosswalk across 202 on the, on the west side of 202 across to get here. And then, Mr. Chaplin had just noted, I'm just looking at Google imagery and from, you know, what's built, is, there is the, the curb ramp on the western corner across here where they're proposing. So that, so the state probably had put in those improvements with some intention, and they're probably, I mean, I'll let the applicant speak, it sounds like their permit to DOT made the request in the, in the DOT right of way to make the, the crosswalk improvement. And that's generally how the state operates, is they're gonna create connection points where they can make-
Right, but what I'm saying is, the connection point here is gonna be exceptionally dangerous, because at every point of the, the traffic light cycle, somebody's coming dangerous because at every point of the traffic light cycle, somebody's coming in and somebody's going out of that site. And, you know, there's no, there's no walk, don't walk, and I don't think we want a walk, don't walk, because then you're taking even more time away from cars and making the challenge of getting in there and in and out of there in a car even worse. I'm just, I'm raising the question of, from a DOT standpoint, is that a real smart idea?
Yeah, I can chime in here. This is Patrick Downey once again, provided traffic testimony, I think, two meetings ago now. So the actual intersection crosswalks, curb ramps, signal equipment are currently being upgraded by DOT as part of their own project unrelated to this application. Their request to us was to add the sidewalk along our two frontages, but the actual installation of that crosswalk and the associated signal improvements that go along with it is being done by DOT of their own accord, unrelated to us.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify, they would be installing the walk, don't walk if there's going to be a crosswalk here?
Correct, yes. They are in the process of adding various signal upgrades at this intersection, of which that crossing with the amenities, the walk, don't walk.
So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, the signal will be upgraded, will include a button, it won't automatically go to walk, to a walk cycle, but there'll be presumably a button that if a person wants to cross, they'll hit that. The rest of the cycle would be interrupted at some point to allow pedestrians to walk across.
The walk for that phase, again, I'm not looking at their proposed plan, but for this type of situation would typically run concurrently with Route 202. So crossing of Town Center Road would occur when 202 has the green. So right turns, as at most intersections, would need to yield to pedestrians crossing if they're crossing at the same time. Now, at the moment, there's very little pedestrian activity out there at all from my observations and from our traffic counts. Most of our pedestrian activity related to this project would be internal to the shopping center.
Yeah, and I don't want to harm your application because of what the DOT is doing, because I understand that they are separate operations. But I'm looking at that, you know, I'm concerned about pedestrian safety, car safety, our police officers, they're now going to have to clean up more accidents and problems, and I have to be scratching my head there on whether the DOT made the right decision on that one.
From their perspective, you know, if I was in DOT shoes, I would argue that there's some legal requirement on their end to safely accommodate a pedestrian who wishes to cross there. It's the underlying assumption of traffic regulations that pedestrians have the right to cross at intersections. So if it's something a pedestrian can legally do, they should provide the buttons and the striping and the signage to at least...
Okay. And you would expect that there would be a button to cross Town Center Road that a person wanting to do that activity would push, and then the cycle at some point would be interrupted to give that person the portion of the cycle to traverse safely?
So two-part question. For the first part, would there be a button? My expectation would be yes, you know, for the latest few signals we've designed that have been reviewed and approved by DOT, they would have made us add the button in this situation. As far as interruption of the signal, I do not think it would do that, simply because 202, every cycle is getting plenty of green time to accommodate that pedestrian movement anyway. All that button would really do would be to turn on the pedestrian's walk, don't walk indication.
And then essentially, that would require people making the right turn into the complex to see that there is a pedestrian and to stop and to hope that the three cars behind them also stop.
They would need to yield to that pedestrian.
All right, and again, I know I can't hold you responsible for this because this is actually not on your site, but I'm scratching my head on this one and I'm envisioning, let's just call it, pedestrian vehicle conflict at that place.
During your traffic study, how many pedestrians actually crossed?
I don't have the counts in front of me, but very, very few, if any.
If I could add something, it seems there's already a crosswalk from the entrance to the parking lot for the Fidelity Investments Building. All I see this crosswalk really doing is making a shorter path from the Fidelity property to the Chick-fil-A area, but I think we've established you don't necessarily need to have the shortest possible path if you really want Chick-fil-A. So is there any possible leeway here that we could stick with the original crosswalk?
Well, again, this isn't something proposed by us, you know, regardless of the outcome of this application, DOT is doing this. It's out of our hands. I just have a little knowledge about it, but I was passing along since...
So it's your testimony that these intersection improvements would be happening regardless of whether or not Chick-fil-A was making an application or not. It could remain the vacant Ruby Tuesdays for the next however many years, and DOT would still proceed with these improvements.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, just to clarify, Mr. Peck, including the town, the one connecting north, northwest?
Not the Raymour and Flanagan, talking about the Route 202.
Yeah, the one's internal to the center, that's what we're discussing, incorporating into this application.
Not the one in the northwest.
Correct. The signalized intersection itself is completely DOT's jurisdiction, their project. They've simply asked us to build the sidewalk.
For saying, for the 202 crossing, 202 and Town Center Road crossing, which Councilman Cars was basically looking at the DOT issues, so will the DOT will put a sign on the 202 south that, you know, heavy intersection or something that we always see it, or you do you know about that? So that at least people, drivers should know that, okay, there's a pedestrian crossing coming up, so they should be more worried about it by turning right.
Yeah, I mean, the expectation at a signalized intersection, especially with the striped crosswalk, is that there could be pedestrians there that the motorist needs to be aware of. I'm not aware if DOT is providing any supplemental signage to that effect. They may or may not, I'm not certain.
Well, Mr. Councilor Cars, I see your concern now. We have a big problem.
And I mean, just to put this to rest, because, you know, I know this is now somewhat far afield from the application. I mean, can I ask our professionals to follow up with the state on this one? I mean, it just feels like a, like a conflict waiting to happen.
Yeah, normally the state would reach out, excuse me, to the engineering department and give us an overview or a heads up of the work they're proposing. This has not come across our desk, so I can certainly follow up with their government affairs official and find out what the full scope is, what the improvements are, and report back to the board for sure.
Because when you paint a crosswalk, you're asking people to use it, and you're essentially blessing, this is the place to go.
Correct. We can look into it.
Thank you, Mr. Burr.
Mr. Chairman, if we can just come back to, so I'm just taking a look again at the current existing site. There is a crosswalk kind of like between the, I guess, Verizon building. Like, if you look, there's a sidewalk there. Can I ask the applicant to go back to the initial plans and kind of have that crosswalk, I guess, as we've discussed with our planner as well?
If that's what everybody prefers, we're happy to do it and work with the professionals to do that. I do maintain, I do think it's preferable where it is, but we're happy to make the change if that's what everyone prefers.
Or have both, depending on whatever our professionals deem.
I'll prefer both.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Can I put additional recommendation to put a sidewalk near the...
The crosswalk.
Crosswalk, sorry. Crosswalk.
Where it was originally intended. I think that's...
Add an additional crosswalk internal next to the Verizon?
Is it, sorry, is it additional or is it just the relocation of the sidewalk?
I'll say additional.
I think Ms. Sarmed had, and Mr. Burr were talking about, and you guys can correct me, correct us if we can have both.
Our initial thought in looking at this and hearing some of the concerns is to add that secondary crosswalk back to mimic the original conditions. So now you would have two crossings, one at the main intersection and then one further by that emergency exit only. That's our recommendation at this point, but we can look at the applicant, confirm everything off, if the board's comfortable with that. So, it's okay, I'll say it, but if we're adding the secondary sidewalk or crossing back into the mix, there might be a reduction of one, one parking space on the overall site.
I think the idea would be is we don't want to, there's some shrubbery on the other side, right? So in theory, you could remove all that and put lots of sidewalk, but I think the idea is just to make the connection cleaner, go straight to the parking spaces, lose a space to make that connection. I think that'd be preferable for everyone, but again, we would lose one space as a result.
Doesn't, doesn't create a parking space deficiency. I just wanted to note that.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, is that a crosswalk street or is that on the side?
Yes, it's, yeah, technically the pad, even though it's a pad, it's all part of one site. So the, we gave two parking counts, but you'd be losing one parking space on the overall site, which is heavily overparked, or more than adequately meets your ordinance requirements.
Mr. Banga, Mr. Chowdhury, is that what you envisioned, having those two?
Yes. So, Mr. Burr, will that be okay? If they will lose one parking spot, one more parking spot, it'll be basically 40 instead of 42.
I think that portion of the site is so overparked by the Raymour and Flanagan that losing one space is not going to have an impact.
Thank you.
Provided that both crosswalks have adequate signage for safety. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Peck, we have that down as a condition?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'd like to also give an opportunity to the public one last time to ask, or any comments, any commentary generally. We didn't close that out previously, and we'll close it now, closing public portion for this meeting. Okay, Mr. Peck, do we want to go through all the conditions?
Yes. In addition to the generally applicable conditions that go with every application, I have adding low-level, applicant will add low-level landscaping to the Route 202 frontage to the review and satisfaction of the board professionals. I have that the township engineer will be provided with an annual certification of stormwater management and facilities maintenance. That there will be enhanced screening of the matching block trash enclosure. Well, the trash enclosure will be in matching block to the building and the trash enclosure will be, will have enhanced screening, again, to the satisfaction of the board professionals. One hour after closing, the site lighting will be dimmed to security levels. There will be internal wayfinding signs. The applicant shall review with the board engineer and implement those recommendations. This may have already been satisfied, but get fire official approval of the site plan and the circulation plan. The, what we are terming as the escape exit, that will be striping and signage to deter the public use of that, and that will be, again, to the review and satisfaction of the board professionals. Following up on the wayfinding sign condition, the sign noted as 6D on the sign shall indicate Route 202 South.
Alternate to.
Alternate to.
Alternate.
Route 2. Okay. They'll work with the board professionals regarding if they can plant and locate any additional trees on the site, abide by the board professionals' recommendations. The island on the site will be reduced to the board engineer satisfaction so it can accommodate snow removal vehicles. There will be a secondary crosswalk from the Raymour and Flanagan lot that'll be in the vicinity of that escape outlet. Again, that of the precise location will be to the recommendation of the board engineer. And then there will be signage put in place identifying both crosswalks from the Raymour and Flanagan. And again, the design of those signs and location of those signs will be to the review and satisfaction of the board professionals. That's all I had. I might have missed one or two over the course of the four evenings, so speak now or hold your peace. So that's it. So the motion would be to, if you're inclined, to grant the preliminary and final major site plan with the four bulk variances subject to the conditions that I just elaborated.
Well, I'll make the motion that has just been described.
I'll second that.
Councilman Kirsch, it's Ms. Akora.
No, I'm sorry, are we having any discussion?
Correct, we have the motion. We need to open up, close that portion of the meeting. Open up the portion for deliberations. We'll start with Mr. Magura.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the Chick-fil-A people. They're very patient with us. Thank you very much for that. I found your presentations well-prepared and clear. Looking at the site, I think there's an opportunity here for development, positive development of the site. I think it's needed, so therefore I would endorse the application.
Mr. Wang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you for the, I think, modifications. I think the business is, and also the plan looks, you know, better than the previous version. I...
Yeah, no, I appreciate the applicant working with us to make the site improvements. Obviously, I mean, the site has been vacant for quite some time, so I think I'll be a welcome.
Ms. Choudhury.
I would echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. I appreciate your cooperation, all the necessary revisions that you've made to accommodate all of our concerns and our requests. I look forward to welcoming Chick-fil-A to Bridgewater, and I would support the application.
Councilman Kirsch.
Thank you. So I'm going to be pretty consistent with how I felt throughout the hearing. You know, overall, I think it's a good application. I do appreciate the flexibility throughout our multiple hearings to hear the interests and concerns of the board members acting on behalf of our community. I think this has been a good partnership overall. You know, I know that Chick-fil-A and that the person that ultimately operates this will want the site to be successful, shares same or similar concerns that we have about safety and traffic and everything else. You know, I do have concern that this site is a little too small, but again, if the applicant has gone through its due diligence and feels that they can be successful at this location, I have to accept that answer. I think it's something that, you know, we'll need to just keep an eye on is, what is the flow looking like in and out of this site? Is it operating the way it's expected? You know, are people, you know, going, you know, are people doing unusual driver, driving maneuvers that are potentially creating hazards? You know, overall, though, I think it's a good plan. The, you know, investment in the community, you know, is certainly appreciated. The partnership is appreciated and, you know, I will, you know, I'll vote to support the application.
Mr. Chowdhury.
First of all, thank you very much for the great, sort of, all of this. And I'd really like it where you're presenting, you're explaining that very, um, back to the, for all the support, for all the, 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 for all
Ms. Sikora.
I'm grateful for Chick-fil-A's professionalism throughout the process and willingness to address all the concerns as much as, as much as possible. I'm sick of looking at that empty building. I live right past there, so I drive by it every single day, and I just look at the real estate opportunity for, for another business to come in, so I'm excited about it. I do understand the traffic concerns. I drive by it to and from work every single time, or every single day, and my kid sports and all of that. And I believe that addressing it as much as possible, working with the state, but also working with us as a town to, to make it as feasible as possible, is great. We cannot control other drivers. I wish at some points we could, but we cannot. So I'm really looking forward to it. I love what Chick-fil-A does for the community outside of business, outside of the business too, and I think it's going to be a great addition to Bridgewater.
Over the course of the last several meetings, we've spent several hours prioritizing discussion on traffic impact on the internal network as well as the external road network. I know for myself personally, I discussed a lot of my Flemington experience, visiting that site over there off of Route 202, but this is not the Flemington site. This is a site that's captured internally on this greater shopping location, and I believe that, there was some testimony given earlier on several meetings ago about the potential for internal capture, what this is going to do for that shopping center, the ability to formulate a complete and vibrant shopping experience for Bridgewater. I think that outweighs, as Mr., as Councilman Kirsch said before, you know, if something's going to be successful, does that necessarily going to be a detriment? We have to take a look and see how things are going to work. I think down to tonight's meeting, the applicant has demonstrated several different ways that they're willing to accommodate or put in safety guard measures in order to alleviate some of these traffic concerns. We've talked about changing their dual-purpose lanes. We've talked about adding egresses. I genuinely appreciate that, because down to every last little bit, down to the last crosswalk we discussed, these are, these are components that we're trying to, that are, you know, used to encourage public safety. Signage, that should alleviate a lot of the concerns as far as exiting the area. That's important. I also appreciate that there's going to be a local member of the community that's going to be overseeing, keeping in contact with our local administration, our local public services. I think that's something important. That's a value added for the township. But lastly, again, the product. I have no doubt that the success that it's shown nationwide is going to emulate, replicate the same thing here, and we expect a very high level of success here in Bridgewater as well, so I'm inclined to support it as well. Ms. Probst, prior to filling that motion, I do believe we're going to need to clarify the eligibility for voting.
I don't have the affidavit. I reviewed the footage from the video, or the livestream. I'm prepared to sign, yeah.
Sorry, yes. Yes.
I believe we've had the motions already called. Yes.
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 Mr. Silbert, members of Chick-fil-A, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've learned quite a bit, and we look forward to dining at your restaurant here in town. Thank you. Okay, moving along this evening, there's an item on the agenda listed as Icon Keystone NJP for owner Pool 2 LLC. That will not be heard this evening. I believe we will hear that on January 21st.
Did they, I'm sorry, did they notice for tonight and we're carrying it, or they're noticing for the 21st? Okay, so no further notice will be given. So anybody who's here for that watching, out on YouTube, there'll be no further notice given on that application.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Moving along to our last item for the evening is Avnous Incorporated, Block 165, Lot 2, commonly known as 360 Milltown Road.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, I have a time restriction. That's going to leave you with eight members, not nine. Is that still acceptable for you to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Silbert.
Good evening.
Hello again.
Because I think the last, the last double application, hopefully, so, so just for the record, my name is Michael Silbert. I'm an attorney at the law firm DeFrancesco Bateman, located in Warren Township, New Jersey. It's my privilege this evening to represent the applicant, Avnous Inc., in this matter. Let me just start off by expressing that this is really an exciting opportunity for me to have been involved in this application thus far, and I think it's a, it's a testament to the township of Bridgewater to host one of the latest and greatest technological innovations in the country, as we'll detail over the course of tonight's hearing. You'll hear about Avnous's groundbreaking efforts to address climate change through innovative carbon capture technology, and, as I'd mentioned, I think, again, it's a testament to Bridgewater to be at the forefront of technological progress throughout the country, so I'm personally honored to be a part of it. This is an application for amended minor site plan approval concerning property located at Block 165, Lot 2, as designated on the Bridgewater Township tax maps, commonly known as 360 Milltown Road. The property is situated in the Township C3 Office and Service Zone District. I think the board should be aware that this board previously granted minor site plan approval for the property back on April 27th, 2021. That was memorialized in a resolution, which I believe has been provided to the board, and the improvements in that resolution speak to improvements to the existing parking lot, a minimal increase in the improved lot coverage. And that application really stemmed from the township's efforts, and then thus the applicant, or the property owner at that time, his response to, to convert the existing one-story building from an athletic training facility to laboratory and office uses for research and development, which it seems to have, the township took concerted interest to make sure that this zone and this property was used in that fashion. So tonight, the applicant proposes to install an advanced direct air capture unit within a two-story, 1,000-square-foot structure located on the southern portion of the property. I'm not going to be able to detail it as well as my witnesses, but it's a, I'll just remind the board and the public, it is a proprietary technology, and the macro intent of it is to help reduce atmospheric CO2 emissions to help address one of the primary greenhouse gases responsible for climate change. This application does not involve any variances. The applicant does seek one minor design waiver related to parking lot lighting, which our engineer will detail. I intend to call three witnesses this evening to provide testimony and support of this application. Mr. Will Kane is here. He's the CEO of Avnous Inc., and he's just going to provide some background on Avnous and, to the extent possible, discuss the proprietary DAC technology proposed for the site. Mr. Kane is here from California and was excited to be here and have the opportunity to address the board. The second witness is Dr. Ben McCool. He's Senior Vice President of Technology at Avnous. Dr. McCool will address specific operational questions raised in the joint professional review memo we received, issued by the board's professionals on January 4th, 2000, it should be 2025. There's a, it just marks 2024. And then our final witness is Mr. Rob Michello. He's our engineer. Mr. Michello will present the amended site plan and provide engineering testimony. He's very much familiar with the site. He was here before the board back in 2021. So before swearing in my witnesses, I just wanted to address a few items raised in the joint professional review memo. So one of the first things I just wanted to discuss, I felt that perhaps could be more legal-related, was we treated the DAC system as a principal structure. The applicant is treating the DAC system and housing structure as a principal building on the property, because this system represents the real primary purpose of Avnous's presence on the site. I'll note that while the DAC structure is smaller in size compared to the over seventeen, almost 18,000-square-foot building located to the north, it's still a fairly large structure. It's significantly larger than your typical accessory structure, which, when I look at the ordinance, it seems accessory structures are typically associated with a shed or detached garage. Ultimately, it's central to Avnous's operations, and to me, it makes it more appropriately classified as a second principal structure rather than as an accessory structure or accessory use. Additionally, I just would point out that, that Bridgewater zoning regulations do not impose restrictions on the number of principal structures or principal, principal uses permitted on a single lot within a commercial zone. The height of this proposed structure that I had mentioned is 34 feet, which is well within the 45-foot maximum height permitted in the zone, but again, is more akin probably to a principal structure. So, and then lastly, I would just say that I wasn't at the conceptual review. There was an informal conceptual review meeting with the board's professionals. Perhaps they can chime into this, but I thought that it was a, that the professionals on our team discussed treating this as a, as a principal structure, and I imagine it was for the reasons I had just laid out. Second thing in the review memo, the reference to freestanding signage, the freestanding signage referenced in the review memo was actually approved in 2021, and I'll note that I went through the 2021 Board Resolution. It does not explicitly mention the 2021 approved freestanding signage. However, it was depicted on the 2021 approved amended site plan, and it was also appropriately referenced in the 2021 joint professional review memo from that time. The details of that previously approved freestanding sign remain on the amended site plan on Sheet 9. It's located in a pictorial fashion in the center of Sheet 9. The, just, just so the board is aware, this, the sign has not been constructed yet, but the concrete footings have already been installed to accommodate the sign, so I believe that the, the property owner is working towards that. The last thing is not in the review memo, I just wanted to touch upon it. It's the floor area ratio, so absolutely not a pertinent issue relative to tonight's application. I just wanted to make this comment, I wanted to ensure it was reflected in the record, that the applicant did include the DAC system and housing structure in its FAR calculations. It results in an FAR of just over 7%, very much well below the 30% maximum permitted by ordinance. I just wanted to point, however, that the DAC structure, in my opinion, should be included from, from the FAR calculations, since it is a mechanical, it's more mechanical equipment, and it's serving the non-residential building areas. Based upon my review of the ordinance, and reasonable minds could disagree, the zoning regulations exclude mechanical equipment from FAR, so I would think that the DCA system aligns with these regulations. So again, I mentioned it's a non-issue, I understand that.
Because it seems to me you can either have two principal structures, or you can discount the FAR. I mean, it's like, you know, you're looking to have it both ways there, but like you said, I don't know that it's really.
Well, if, if the board decides to treat it as two principal structures, then I see what, I see what your point is. So I think perhaps the board's professionals and the board can weigh in on how they want to treat it. I only raise it for future development reasons, you know, it could be 20 years from now or ever.
So with the DAC structure, you'd be at 7% FAR?
Slightly above 7%, right. It's a minimal increase in FAR. It's, I think that, that was my interpretation also. If, if you're calling it a principal structure, then it can't, in my opinion, count towards the FAR. But I'll, I'll leave that issue alone. I just wanted that to be on the, on the record for, for future development opportunities for the property. So if, if the board professionals want to address this now or later, let me know, but those are really the main things I wanted to address before I called my first witness.
So the kind of genesis of that comment about the question of whether it's accessory or principal really relates back to some of those initial informal concept meetings when this was brought to our attention, mostly because the structure was initially brought up as a temporary structure, which kind of led to our determination about what the path forward, for how it ended up at the board, essentially. Temporary structures are, zoning's not kind of temporary structures. Zoning and site plan deals with, as if every structure is going to exist for the rest of eternity, so there's no differentiation. And so that kind of, in my mind, initially triggered the idea that this is accessory to the use simply because it was initially proposed as temporary. Now, as, you know, we explained to the applicant the path, the requirements to come here for amended site plan, I don't know if that kind of transformed the, the use or the structure in their minds, but the, the other thing is that this building has the space for two tenants, which is currently occupied by one, which is Avnous. I don't, there was discussions about the potential for them to expand into the other tenant, but at the end of the day, there are, there, there's a principal structure that has multiple tenant spaces. And so I was looking at it as if Avnous only has a portion of the building, then it would be, it would seem a little strange to have a principal structure related to only a portion of the principal building. Now, I understand Mr. Silbert's comment about understanding accessory uses in, in our code, but it does also permit horse barns are permitted. Horse barns are not a small structure by any means. The other thing is that we don't really have many, there's no implications here to the applicant, as far as I know, from our ordinance requirements about setbacks, height, the size of the accessory structure, there's nothing that would trigger additional variance relief, and I don't think that there's any strong difference between calling it a principal accessory structure. I think the most conservative approach would be to call it an accessory structure, because even if it is part of their principal business, it is still just a portion of their use on the site. So that's how I looked at it. I'll, I'll let the board kind of decide. Like I said, there's no differentiation really, or no triggering of any new variance relief, as far as I know. And while it may seem a little bit strange, this is not our usual case. This isn't a shed, so it is unusual by the nature of it, but it's, it's something to grapple with, but I think.
Right, like practically for this application, it really doesn't matter, but down the road, if they want to expand their site and use things, could it then have an impact depending on whether it's deemed a principal or an accessory structure? Or is that something that could just be deferred, you know, if and when, there's a future?
I think no matter what, if they were going to expand this, this structure outside, they'd have to come back before this board, right? Because of site plan changes, the same reason why they're here tonight. So when I look at, and I don't, I'm not trying to lead the board down any path as far as its determination, but there are, there are other portions of the ordinance that do specifically note that multiple principal structures and uses are permitted on the site, and so I get a little bit cautious also, even though it's silent in this zone, that, that's something that's not explicitly permitted or not permitted, but in other zones, it is something that is explicitly permitted. So the silence here doesn't say that it's not or otherwise, but I think the safer route, in my opinion, is to call it an accessory structure. That's the, that's just the safer option here.
I'm certainly not opposed to that. I, I thought that, I'll, two, two comments. One, with respect to the principal, multiple principal uses on a lot, the ordinance explicitly says that there shall be no more, there shall not be more than one principal structure on a, in a single family zone or residential zone. That was the first comment I'd make, but anyway, I personally don't have. That was the first comment I'd make, but anyway, I personally don't have an objection to it being considered an accessory structure unless my engineer tells me that there was some variance that we had missed, but I don't believe that's the case, having just looked at the schedule. My, my only comment would be then if it is considered to be accessory and not principal, I, I would think that, that again, it should be considered as not counting, although it'll count towards its lot coverage, it wouldn't count towards the FAR. But I don't want to belabor this point because it's not why we're here. It was, it was food for thought, and I just wanted the resolution to reflect if this does get approved, that I did raise that issue, and I don't have any objection if, Ms. Armad, if you want to treat it as a necessary structure. I thought there was a possibility there could have been a variance attached to it, but...
No, and I look through that, through the accessory structure and use requirements throughout the code. I look specifically in the zone. I think they'll meet the accessory setbacks, which are rear and yard only. There's no size, size requirements, particularly, we, our ordinance does spell out certain accessory structure requirements, like horse barns and radio towers and sheds and whatever, but this is not the typical, so it doesn't fit any of those categories. But regardless of that, looking generally at accessory structures, it doesn't generate any, any additional variance relief.
Thank you. So, that's, that's fine if the, if the board, board and the board professionals want to treat this as a necessary structure, I think that would be, that'd be fine. We can move on to our, to our witnesses if it's okay, Mr. Chairman. And is it your preference? I have all three sworn in.
Mr. Silbert, swear them all in.
Excellent.
We'll start with the gentleman in front. Well, we'll, we'll all do it, but then I'll have you all state and spell your names for the record. So, the order will go, we'll start with the man in front, and we'll end with Mr. Michelangelo. So, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're going to give in connection with this hearing will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great. Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Will Kane. W-I-L-L-K-A-N. I'm the CEO of AVNOS.
Well, you all actually agreed, so now just state and spell your name.
Okay. My name is Benjamin Moll. I am the Senior Vice President of Technology at AVNOS. My name is M-C-C-O-O-L.
M-C-C-O-O-L?
Correct.
And you're a vice president at AVNOS?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Rob Will. Last name is Will. M-O-S-C-B-T-L-L. I'm a sales manager.
Great.
Thank you. And before, before I ask you to introduce yourself, Mr. Kane, you have a PowerPoint up there on your screen that you're going to present. Is that correct?
Correct.
And if we can just mark the PowerPoint presentation, how many slides does it consist of?
Nine slides.
So, there's nine slides. If we can just mark this exhibit as A1.
And can you provide a copy of that, like in PDF format or something, to Ms. Probst?
Sure can.
Okay, great.
Do that tomorrow, and...
Nine-slide PowerPoint.
Okay. So, Mr. Kane, my understanding is that you, you have a presentation prepared, obviously. Do you want to just begin introducing yourself in the presentation? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, and community members for the time here today. So, as Mr. Silbert referenced, my name's Will Kane. I'm the CEO here at AVNOS. We've already talked about my colleagues that will also be addressing the board throughout the course of this slide deck. And I started AVNOS about five years ago, which has been a part of my eighteen-year career in early-stage energy technology operations. So, I'm happy to report that, that I have a reasonable amount of experience in developing early-stage companies and early-stage energy technologies. To tell you, I'm here to tell you a little bit about AVNOS, what we're doing and who we are, and you can see on the screen there, this is our AVNOS family, and the twenty-six person AVNOS team is focused on developing and commercializing our leading technology, globally-leading technology in the direct air capture of carbon dioxide. I'll refer to that as DAC or DAC. So, DAC is an exciting and fast-moving part of the energy technology landscape, and what it is, and I have a slide here in a moment that'll talk a little bit more and give you a picture of what direct air capture is, but effectively, we are removing legacy carbon dioxide emissions from the atmosphere around us. This is distinct from capturing emissions from an industrial process or a power plant, for example. We are capturing carbon dioxide that has already been emitted into the atmosphere through our proprietary technology. And part of what makes our technology particularly differentiated and gives us a lead in the global landscape of direct air capture is that we are capable of producing water for every ton of CO2 that we remove from the atmosphere. In fact, we produce five tons of liquid distilled quality water for every one ton of CO2 that we, we remove from the atmosphere, and everybody else in the direct air capture space is a water consumer. That's a key technological differentiation for us and makes us more applicable in more geographies around the globe than others of our friends in the space. Now, direct air capture writ large, a, a quick diagram here on the slide. Really, as I mentioned, our primary consumable is air. It's just the ambient air around us, and at AVNOS, the only other consumable is electricity. So, we draw air into our system and consume electricity to power the system, and then we run that air and electricity through a proprietary technology, which on this slide is represented by those four fan icons. And inside of that proprietary technology box, we isolate the carbon dioxide and water content from the air, the, the ambient air that flows through our system. So, we end up with two product streams, two value streams, carbon dioxide in gaseous form and liquid distilled quality water. By and large, what happens with the water and the CO2 is really one of two things. The first is what's called utilization, and that can mean combining the water and the CO2 that we have captured into a further processing step that would result in things like low-carbon fuels or chemicals. And the other disposition of the carbon dioxide and water that we capture from the atmosphere would be in the form of what's called geologic storage, so taking that CO2 and water and putting it back underground and storing those products for, for very long time scales on a, from a geological perspective. To be very clear, neither of those two things will happen here in Bridgewater. What we'll be demonstrating in Bridgewater is the efficacy of the technology, of the capture technology. We will not be doing any further processing or disposition of the water and CO2 that we capture. And I would just note here that our water, as I referenced, is distilled quality water, which makes it highly valuable and highly versatile. And that's what we'll be demonstrating and testing with what we're calling Project Brighton. You can see on the screen in front of you, rendering of what Project Brighton will look like when it's constructed and operational in about six months. It'll be located on-site, as we were just discussing, at our Technology Development Center at 360 Milltown Road. This particular unit is sponsored by the United States Navy. We have existing relationships with the United States Department of Energy as well, and ultimately, we will be proving what I showed on the previous slide, which is, again, the efficacy and viability of what we believe to be the most advanced direct air capture technology in the world. So, we're bringing a very, again, as I mentioned, an exciting and fast-moving part of the energy technology landscape to Bridgewater and about which we are certainly quite excited. And what are we doing at the site in Bridgewater? You can see there an aerial view on, on a beautiful Bridgewater day of 360 Milltown Road. That's the roughly eighteen thousand square foot Technology Development Center that Mr. Silbert referenced previously. That's Milltown Road in front, North Branch Park in the bottom left of the, of the image that you see there. Once Project Brighton is operational, which, as, as I referenced, will be in roughly six months, assuming this board approves what we're here to talk about today, this facility will be the leading direct air capture research facility anywhere in the world. It'll be state-of-the-art and unmatched in its ability to test a variety of different stages of the commercial technology that we're working on. Today, we have twelve people at this site in Bridgewater. We have plans to three-X that roster of people over the course of the next eighteen months. In the main, those folks are highly educated, highly qualified engineers and scientists and research and development professionals, and those folks are all working on this exciting technology that ultimately we will be exporting around the world. When I say exporting, I don't mean we're making things in, in this facility and shipping them around the world. What I mean by that is, is taking the technology and providing that in geographies all over the world, and will also give us the chance to host our partners and investors and customers that come from all over the world here in Bridgewater at 360 Milltown. So, with that, that concludes my commentary and my introduction to AVNOS, and I'd happily take any additional questions.
And thank, thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Kane, and I promise the board and the board professionals, we will address the review memo with our next witness. Just one of the questions I wanted to ask you, currently, your operations in the, the main building or the eighteen thousand square foot building, are you the, are you occupying all the space there? Is there any vacant space?
We are. We are the, the only occupant. We are occupying the entire space as of the beginning of this year.
Okay, so that's a, that's a new...
That's a new development. Yeah.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have any other questions, I think. I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, or the board professionals, if they have any questions.
Very good. Mr. Kane, why Bridgewater?
It's a, it's a great question. Ultimately, Bridgewater and Somerset County and this area of New Jersey offer the best, highest-quality talent to underscore the development of this technology. This was the place we looked all over the country. We cast a, undertook a national search, cast a very wide net to identify the best technical leadership and technological qualifications, and, and the best area that we were able to locate was, was Bridgewater.
Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Chowdhury.
Okay. Technology, that's a good one. So, first of all, in, if you're selecting Bridgewater, obviously Bridgewater air quality is far better than, you know, probably Plainfield or other townships. So, since you are basically capturing the air and coming out of the carbon dioxide and the water itself, so why, again, the same question as Bridgewater, because you probably would like to go to that town where we have got more, you know, contamination of the air itself, where the carbon dioxide is more. So, if, my question to you again, you are going to show to the, all the, you know, your customer or your basically client coming in, so don't you think that your metrics will basically, KPI itself will basically not supporting you because of the air quality itself is a good one?
It's a good question, but importantly, the, the CO2 content in the air is roughly the same everywhere in the world. CO2 is one of the constituents of, of air that, but for locations that are very close to high-emitting locations, right, so near a power plant, near an industrial process, there may be elevated levels of carbon dioxide, but by and large, CO2 is in the same quantity everywhere. So, the ability to test here in Bridgewater does not negatively impact our ability to project out how the system will perform elsewhere in the world. So, the priority really in, in being in Bridgewater is, as, as I mentioned to the chairman, is the access to talent that will help us to develop this technology. And being at the 360 Milltown Road site, as I mentioned, will give us more so than any other direct air capture technology company in the world, an end-to-end technology demonstration location. So, we have the laboratory bench scale testing, which we perform inside of the building as of now, and this, the image that you see on the screen in front of us, that is a commercially relevant deployment of the technology. So, we'll have all of that on one site with all of our technical professionals also on that site, which will allow us a much better opportunity to develop and deliver the technology to customers around the world.
So, you are basically taking one ton of air and making a five-ton of water?
No, we, so, we will produce five tons of water for every one ton of carbon dioxide?
Every one ton of carbon dioxide.
Yeah, but that requires many more tons of, of air. Water and CO2 are, are only small constituents of, of, of air.
Since the carbon dioxide is also the, you know, resulting element, so what you're going to do with the carbon dioxide?
So, here in Bridgewater, this, we will not, there will be no further disposition of the CO2. So, this, you can think of this as a catch-and-release program for the CO2. It will come from the atmosphere. We will capture it in our system, and it will go back to the atmosphere in Bridgewater. But it, the, the critical part is demonstrating the efficacy of that capture system, and elsewhere in the world, we will be using the CO2 and the water to produce things like low-carbon fuels and chemicals and/or store the CO2 in geologic formations.
Okay. Thank you. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Kane, approximately, how many sites do you have across the United States or even globally?
Today, we have two sites, the one here in Bridgewater, and we have an operating site in California as well.
And I'm sorry, you testified earlier, I think I missed it. You mentioned there's twelve employees there now. The addition of this structure would require how many more?
There will be, Mr. McCool, or Dr. McCool, and, and Mr. Michelangelo will speak to this. I believe it'll be three? Three additional, three additional employees.
Okay.
Related to this unit.
Okay.
Related to the, to like the operation of it, because he, because he had testified that there was twelve people now and that it'll eventually be three times more at the site, but it's not necessarily tied to the operation of, of the equipment?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so, so we, we should expect on the overall site approximately thirty-six employees?
Over the next, over the next eighteen months.
Great. Thank you.
I have some questions regarding parking, but I'll, I'll get to that with Mr. Michelangelo. Any other questions from board members? Perhaps from our professionals from the review?
I suspect Mr. McCool is going to be able to answer a lot of the questions. I, I think the only question I had or point of clarification is just, just to make sure that this, this proposed structure at this facility is, like you said, for, it's almost a model, correct? It's, it's for testing the technology and the equipment for potential investors, et cetera. This is not going to be put in production in any way. It's, it's more of a...
It's, I think, the word I would use is a demo.
A demo? Perfect. That's the word I was...
It's, this is a commercially relevant deployment of the technology.
Okay.
It's a, it's a unit of one that customers and investors, when they build larger and larger facilities, will deploy many of these units on a site that is not in Bridgewater. So, yeah, this is, this is a demonstration unit.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. I know that this project, or the, the Project Brighton is sponsored by the United States Navy. Is this facility subject to any federal or state regulatory oversight?
Not that I'm aware of. I can, I can follow up.
Yeah, no, I just, I didn't know if there are any, like, third-party approvals or any bodies, like Department of Energy oversight, not...
No, not, not with this unit. With, our contract with the Navy gives us full discretion to, to locate and operate the unit as we see fit.
It's, it's fair to say that any types of requirements imposed on the, on the property are comparable to any other standard land use applications. There's nothing special, there's no special requirements or anything.
Not, not in the agreement with the Navy.
I just had a question.
Mr. Chowdhury.
You mentioned that the CO2 composition in the air is similar, you know, worldwide or, you know, is there any adverse impact on the air qualities, the surrounding air quality, when you catch and release it back in to the air?
No, ultimately, it is just a matter of, for lack of a more sophisticated phrase, it's sending the CO2 back where it came from, right? So, we'll be capturing the CO2 from the air and, and releasing it back into the local environment. Ultimately, there will be no change in, in the, the local environment.
So, no byproducts are created from this type of processing, then?
That's correct.
Any questions from the members of the public? Okay, that closes the public portion for this witness. Mr. Silbert?
Thank you. So, our next wit, witness is, is Dr. McCool. And just for the record again, I know you've already put it on there, but just confirm your role with AVNOS.
I am the Senior Vice President of Technology.
Excellent. And so I have mentioned, I have some, I have several operational questions based on the professional review memo, but to begin, I thought it'd be helpful if you could just talk a little bit about your professional background. We're not asking the board to accept Dr. McCool as an expert witness, but I just thought it'd be helpful to the board to understand his professional background as well as educational background.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My resume in short, I'm a chemical engineer. I have a bachelor's, a master's, and a PhD. I started my professional career at ExxonMobil in Annandale in the Process Technology Department, and then the Corporate Strategic Research Group. I've been working in novel technology development for about 25 years, particularly in the area of separation science. So what we're doing when we're capturing CO2 from the air is we're separating it from the air. So this is a big separations challenge, and like I said, I've been working in that space for many years in industrial R&amp;D and process development.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So just turning right over to the professional review memo, can you start off by discussing some of the functional and operational hours of the DAC system? And perhaps you could also just give a brief overview of the general operational hours for the facility, the existing facility on the property as well?
Absolutely. So when the DAC system is up and fully operational, we plan to operate it 24 hours a day. The facility itself operates on a regular kind of nine to five-ish, maybe eight to seven PM type of an operation, you know, Monday through Friday. We do work some weekends. We do work some late nights, you know, because we're doing R&amp;D, and we are a startup company, but, but it's generally like a typical R&amp;D lab. So that's it.
Excellent. So it sounds like a standard nine to five shift. So are, are there going to be any employees on site after work hours or?
Well, so like I said, sometimes when we're, when we're working on some experiments in the laboratory, we are, you know, staying late. We usually make sure that there are a couple of people there together, so people aren't working alone in the laboratories. I think we don't do shift work, right? So it's just on an as-needed basis. So there's no working people on the site 24 hours a day. The DAC unit will eventually operate 24 hours a day, but the system is designed to operate, not autonomously, but operate without humans there, right? So we control it, we can control it remotely. It's set to lots of control systems so that it fails safely. If anything goes wrong with the system, it shuts down. And we come in the morning and fix it, but we hope that doesn't happen.
Speaking of that, can you just talk about overall maintenance required for the system?
Yeah, sure. So the, the maintenance of the system is general preventative maintenance, right? This is process equipment, so it has fans, like Kane and Will showed you. It has pumps for moving the water around. It has compressors for pulling a vacuum and repressurizing the system so that we can release the CO2 back to the air. So it's maintenance, inspection of process equipment, and, you know, replacement of things like belts, bearings, new lubricants, et cetera, instrumentation calibration on a regular schedule. So the maintenance of the facility will be like most process equipment, where we have a schedule, where we're checking things, and we're replacing as needed or replacing on a useful life schedule.
Excellent.
Typical stuff.
Thank you. I think, I think we'll touch upon this, but are there any byproducts that the, if the system produces it, the board should be aware of?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And so talk a little bit about noise. I figured that that might be a concern. On that wasn't review memo, is there, is there a noise concern here from your standpoint?
There is not.
So is there any type of equipment that you think that the board would be more familiar with, that the noise generated by this system is comparable to?
I mean, we're, it's basically a larger air handling unit, right? So it's, the noise that's emitted is due to the movement of the air. And so it could be like very, a very, very large, you know, heating and ventilation system. We may move as much air as the building moves, so it's not particularly...
Okay. Spoke a little bit about the perhaps temporary nature of this. Do you know what the expected lifespan is of the proposed equipment here?
Yeah, so a system like this is, and this system in particular is designed for a 15 to 20-year useful life, right? Operating in the elements. And our intention is to, is to operate it as a very valuable development tool for our technology on the site. We have a 10-year lease on the site. We plan to operate the equipment, you know, during that, during that window.
So is it, so it's fair to say that, if you could just clarify, so this is not intended necessarily to be temporary? It'll be on the site at least throughout the duration of your lease?
It, it will.
Okay, thank you. In terms of, at the point in which this does become, or need to be decommissioned, is that, does that pose any challenges for AVNOS? Is that easy to do?
Typical decommissioning. We shut down, take it apart, use the useful parts, recycle what we can, dispose if needed, or move, right? So should we need to move, we can pick it up and move it.
And then one of the other questions in the report was, do you anticipate any significant upgrades or expansion to the equipment in the future?
Not expansion. We may make some process improvements, which will be minor things like, we have a better design for a heat pump, right? Moving heat around the system in a better, more efficient way. We may put minor modifications there. We are actively, like Will said, we have an end-to-end research and development from discovery, development, and this is the deployment. So we will be, we'll be making and discovering new materials in our laboratories that we will look to bring to install here that are more efficient at capturing CO2 or water or what have you. So this will basically be the final stop of the technology development before commercialization. So that is a performance upgrade, but we will not be expanding or making the unit larger or taking up more footprint or more power or anything like that.
Thank you. So from, from an operational standpoint, those are all the questions I have. Follow-up, if I can, if I can do that.
Thank you, Mr. McCool. Any questions for the board?
Yes, can I ask a question please?
Mr. Chowdhury.
Yes, thank you. Very good explanation. So what is the noise level? You said it's a minimum, but generally it will be about 65 dB above or below?
We'll have our engineer testify to that, but we are going to obviously comply with all of the administrative code requirements with respect to decibels of the property line. And I'll have Mr. Michelle speak about that and confirm that on the record, but we're going to comply with all noise regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Perhaps from our professionals?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. McCool, Dr. McCool, sorry. The only question I have, I know with the last witness, that there was questions about the release of byproducts such as CO2 back in the air. One of the other kind of byproducts, I guess, of this is water, correct?
Correct.
I know CO2 can go back in the air. What's, what's happening with the water that's produced?
The water is produced as liquid water, and it's about 1,200 gallons or so a day. That's not a lot of water. I think we'll talk about that with Rob. But the water, like Will said, is distilled quality. It's potable water. It's suitable for the storm drain, and we don't believe it has to sustain. But Rob can elaborate.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
And we saw the deck earlier, and we talked about said nauseam already. There are no byproducts. The, the actual structure itself, there are no motors running, no engines running, nothing like that?
I guess there are no internal combustion engines. There are electric motors that are on the fan and everything like that, but there's no combustion.
No combustion.
We're not burning any powder, carbon. We're not creating any extra CO2 emissions in the process. We're simply taking water and CO2 out of the air, releasing the CO2 back into the air where it mixes and gets back to the regular level. And the water is liquid water, which is clean, that can go down in the storm drain. And the units, I should say, we do not use any hazardous chemicals or anything in the system. There is, there aren't, we're not storing any, anything that would be deemed as hazardous and harmful.
That was my subsequent question to you, whether or not there was going to be onsite storage of anything like that, but it sounds like no. Okay, very good.
I do have a question. I know you said that typical hours are nine to five, with some people working late nights and weekends, everyone's wrong. Well, you said that the, the equipment will be used 24 hours a day. And I know you briefly talked about being able to control it remotely, or making sure there are some fail safes in case it were to go down. What could happen, right, to it? And do we have a plan if something, say there were to be a fire or something of that sort?
We don't believe that there's a fire risk. Motors can, can burn out and stop, and so the system is set to fail safe. So if you fail it safe, things shut down, power gets cut to the unit, the fans stop running, the pumps start running, everything just stops, right? And so that, that's part of the, the safety precautions in the control systems that we have in the unit, limit switches, all these types of things that are set to basically fail in a way that shuts everything down and doesn't let anything keep going.
Okay.
Right? And so our plan is, just the facts, but on the 24-hour operation, we were not going to let it run unattended until it is deemed, you know, fully commissioned and in operation. Once it hits all of its, you know, operating parameters and, and we know that the system is safe, then we'll run it. As we're starting it up, we may do some late nights or even some shift work to get it all the way up commissioned and operating. But after that, it will be set to, for unattended operation and fail inherently safe.
Got it, thank you. And are there, I know that we discussed what risks there, you addressed some of the risks that we, we brought up. Are there any risks to having this piece of equipment in Bridgewater?
Not that, not that we've identified.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is the HDAC susceptible to an operation due to like inclement weather or anything like that? Does snow affect it or?
So the environmental conditions will affect the performance of the unit, but not, and that would be, how many tons of CO2 are we able to capture in an hour, right? That can vary with temperature and with the water content in the air. We have systems in there that are actually managing the water. There's a portion of the water that is being absorbed or caught and released, where we're not even making liquid water out of it, so that we can control the amount of water in the, you know, in the actual part that's, that's producing the CO2. So yes, environmental conditions affect performance, but they will not cause failure or a need to shut down or anything like that. Part of this demonstration, and one of the reasons why Bridgewater is a good place, is because it has four seasons, right? So we can operate in the hot and humid summers and in the cold and dry winters like it is out there right now. You know, it's, that's important for us to be able to demonstrate that to any potential customers, that our operations can, can work throughout the four seasons. So that's another reason why we're here.
Any other questions for our professionals?
I did have just one or two, Mr. Chairman. Dr. McCool, you had mentioned, when this unit is operational, it would go into a factor operation 24/7, right?
That would be our intent.
Can you just explain to the board why that would be? In my mind, if this is a demo unit, you could just flip the switch on and off as needed to show your potential investors. Why, why does it need to run 24/7? Is it data collection?
It would, well, yes. So there are, there are reasons in terms of us understanding its performance throughout the day-night cycle as well as the seasonal cycles, right? So the temperature and the humidity go up and down during a day, and then they change seasonally, and they change within a week and all that. And anybody who, any potential investor or commercial partner that wants to build a large array of these, wants to know that it will run all the time. Because when you invest capital to build something like this, you want it utilized 24/7. You want it always doing its job, because otherwise you have capital that's not working for you. And so a question that we get all the time is, how stable is your process? How long can you run it? And this is the avenue to say, this is a commercially relevant demonstration of the technology, and we have run it for a year without loss of performance.
And you had mentioned, I think, I think there was a mention of three new employees potentially?
Right.
Specific to this particular unit or product, right?
Yeah, well, so here, here's how it lays out. Right now, we have two employees on site that will be heavily involved into the day-to-day operations of this unit. They're the process technology engineers. We have three openings currently. We're actively searching to hire people in the first quarter. One of those people will be a full-time operator for the plant. That will be their primary job is help commission the plant and then oversee that plant's operations. Two additional employees, so now it's a total of five employees that will be in Bridgewater that are very hands-on with the site. Only one of them where this is their, their number one job. But the other four will be heavily involved with the system, and all five will be capable of running the system.
Okay. And then describe, because I think I also heard testimony at the beginning of this year, now AVNOS occupies the full 18,000 square feet of the existing building.
As of January 1.
As of January 1. Right now, I think there's 12 employees?
There are.
With the plan for over the next 18 months to grow that triple to 36 employees.
Correct.
Describe the operation in the existing building and how it's going to function and grow in light of this particular unit. What goes on in the existing building or what's planned in the existing building?
All right, so the existing building is currently outfitted with offices, laboratories, and what we call a high bay area, which is just a high-ceiling warehouse type of, of an area. And we, most of the people on site are chemical engineers, most of them PhDs, working on process designs, process conceptualization, new materials discovery, computational chemistry. So we're basically, like Will said, developing the end-to-end from discovery in silicone in a computer, to making the materials, to demonstrating the materials in the laboratory, to demonstrating the materials on a small scale in the high bay, small structured absorbents, a scale suitably large to then test them in this, in this proposed DAC facility. So then we basically go all the way from discovery to a commercially relevant deployment of the technology. And we also have capital projects, people, more nuts and bolts engineers that are designing a plant for the DOE. We're part of these DAC hub programs, right, where we're doing feed packages for 50,000 ton per year facilities. We have a lot of engineers that are working on that. They will be here too. Where now our laboratories are up and operational and spinning. We want to hire laboratory technicians to handle some of the day-to-day operations in the laboratory, so the PhDs can be developing the next experiments and the next concepts of the things that we want to build. So we'll be building more laboratory equipment, and it's all still the same CO2 and water, right? We're not doing exotic chemistries or dealing with hazardous things in the laboratories necessarily. But we feel like as we're ramping up and building, we're bringing on more capabilities to make that pipeline more productive, go faster. So it's just basically building up the internal capabilities so that we can, you know, do more.
Understood. Last question is just from a utility perspective. I think what I heard was really the, all you need for this unit is power, correct? You don't need water. Water is a byproduct, but you're not taking public water.
That is correct.
You're not going to be connected to public sewer. So it's just, just electricity.
Yep.
Right, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you. When we talk about electricity, there's, is this a high voltage situation? Is there anything high voltage operating in the?
Not, not any higher voltage than... Not, not any higher voltage than the standard kind of industrial stuff.
And so now this is proprietary technology. It's going to be, it's going to be essentially out in the open, the way that I'm seeing it now?
Yes.
Will there be, will it be fenced in? Will there be security manning it?
We can, we can get to that in our, in our engineering testimony, if that's okay.
Okay.
And also, just in terms of proprietary, we do not want, you know, unauthorized entry. But what you see here, we're comfortable sharing that. This is what our technology looks like when you can't see what's going on inside the thing.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just, so this is primarily R&amp;D facility, as you mentioned. Is there going to be any, you know, building and exporting of this technology or where is that all?
Not a, not a manufacturing facility. I mean, so when we, when we, when we build this, we're going to basically, we're, we're procuring the pumps and the proprietary parts and all that, putting it together onsite. As we look to scale the technology and like Will said, export it globally, we're not going to be building it here. So we're not, we're not making new things. We're not going to be a manufacturing site ever. This is an R&amp;D facility, right? We will manufacture with third parties, right? Partners that make specific parts of this. We've already put in place that kind of supply chain network that's suitable for commercialization, but we're not, we're not doing that.
So primarily, you'll be importing certain types of material, proprietary and so on and so forth. But once it's built, is there going to be, are you going to continue to bring in materials to the site?
Can you, can you elaborate? I'm not sure.
Well, I guess, it seems like this is going to be the final prototype. Are you guys going to continue to modify this, like, over time? This is, this is just a rendering, you know, kind of a rendering?
This is, this is the first demonstration of, of a commercially relevant scale of the technology, right? And so inside this technology, there are materials that capture water and that capture CO2, and those are proprietary. And we've developed them either in-house or with third parties. And, and we are then having third parties take those materials, put them onto what we call contactors, which is basically what sits in the airflow, right? And then CO2 in the water, they kind of stick on those materials, and then we liberate them and et cetera. So what we do plan to do is continue, like, the research side is continuing to develop better and better materials to do the job of capturing water and CO2 from the air. And when we get to a point where we view that a next generation material has reached a point of viability and greater attractiveness in terms of process performance, we're going to look to install those types of materials in this structure. But it's basically like, take the old one out, put the new one in, and the thing runs better.
The, the structure itself will continue to evolve.
Not the structure.
The components, the components of the structure.
It's not going to evolve. The, the sets or the things that go inside of it that do the proprietary work, that should always be evolving because you always want to make a better and better structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Going off of your question, Mr. Banga, the, the 2021 resolution states that it was represented to the board that there would be approximately, you know, one, one truck trip per day delivering standard materials. My question is, is, is anything changing in terms of, of that type of aspect to this site as a result of this system?
Absolutely not. So there will be, there will be, you know, the traffic associated with getting all the pieces onsite.
Sure.
And then it'll run. And then you'll have our regular UPS and FedEx deliveries. But we won't be seeing semi-trucks full of new stuff coming in on any kind of regular basis.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Mr. Chowdhury.
So if you can kindly, you know, explain this. Basically, where I see it, there's obviously, you probably have lots of patent. And so basically, two IP issues here. One is that you basically have a, you know, some proprietary material, you are developing it, which can basically absorb the carbon, air and make it carbon dioxide or water or whatever it is. And then second thing is that basically process itself is the IPO process that you have it only. So those are two, you may have a lot of patent, but out of those patent, those are the two main things that you are going to basically have an IP on it.
I, I don't dispute that. I will, I would say that I would like to have a lot more IP than just the things that you mentioned. But yeah, I mean, generally speaking, it's the process and it's the materials and it's the use of the materials and the method of making various aspects of it.
So your R&amp;D facility will be basically engaging all the doctors and everybody else that they're, they're going to basically improve the materials continuously so that you can have, basically you can produce more carbon dioxide and more water with the same air quantity.
And the same amount of capital.
Same amount of capital, right, obviously.
So if I can make more CO2 out of this installation, year after year, by improving the materials.
And the process.
Then I can, you know, basically about how much carbon it, how much carbon you can capture in a fixed amount of capital is, is the name of the game, basically. So, yeah. So it's ongoing R&amp;D. I mean, we could, we want to continue to make it better until we start to approach, you know, the thermodynamics.
Exactly. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
It, it might be an aggressive question, but do you foresee leaps and bounds in this technology or projected in the next few years in which you would have to minimize the size of the structure?
That would be a great problem to have. But yeah, so we, we have seen, we have seen, boy, in the last 16 months, we've seen more than a tenfold increase in our, our capture of CO2 in a, in a fixed, small pilot plant that we have out in California. And so we're continuing to push that. Would I, some things, like if I were going to use the same structure and all of a sudden I could capture so much more CO2, I might have to put a new fan in, right? Because I might have to move more air. Or I might have to install a smaller chamber that's got less volume of CO2 capture material. But the general structure here, we don't anticipate having to change it in the foreseeable future. Okay?
I just had a question. I'm not sure if you're at liberty to say, but just out of curiosity, what's the end game of the distilled water?
Well, like Will said, in the CO2 utilization world, like oil companies, airlines, the Navy, for example, is very interested, like, so let's just use the Navy for example. They're interested in, in theater production of fuel, right? So if you have CO2 from water, what you do is you can do electrolysis to make hydrogen from the water. You can reduce the C, you can run a reverse water gas shift, sorry for technical terms, to take the CO2 into CO, and then you have CO and wa, and H2. So that's called syn gas. And from syn gas, you can recombine those, a process called Fisher tropes, and you can basically make jet fuel. So if we have very clean water and pure CO2, two more process, or three more process steps, and you can have jet fuel. So you can basically make jet fuel from the air in, in the theater of operations. All of a sudden, that's a way to liberate yourself from the supply chain, et cetera. So that's like one of the, one of the reasons why the Navy is interested in this technology. Other, other, other aspects are agriculture, potable water. I mean, we're in a world of potential climate change, and, and water is a thing where a lot of the world is starting to live in a water-stressed environment where it hadn't been 10, 15 years ago. So being a company that's capturing CO2 from the air and also providing water to a water-stressed community is an advantage as well. So there's good neighbor aspects. There's other aspects that make water an attractive kind of aspect of our technology to differentiate it.
Thank you.
There are several other types of CO2 capturing corporations out there, I'm assuming, right? I've heard years ago, there was one that they were trying to develop long tubes, I think that went into the ocean to capture CO2 from what I, what I recall. Is yours a direct competitor to those types of solutions?
Well, carbon dioxide removal, you know, holistically is, you know, there are a lot of different angles for, for how to deal with it, right? So there's, you know, ocean storage, there's planting trees, there's, you know, all sorts of things. There's post-combustion capture, which is like capturing it off of a power plant. So the direct air capture is kind of its own space. And in that direct, in the direct air capture space, ours looks more like, we call it solid absorption. So that is a thing that looks familiar. I heard one of the committee members say it's a bunch of pipes and pumps. And so it looks like process equipment that chemical engineers understand, and it uses materials for separation. So there's a niche in, in that space. There are, you know, a good 20, 30 companies at various stages of development. So are we the same as the guy with long tubes in the ocean? I'm not sure exactly. But CDR is, is a large, you know, area. And there are a lot of solutions. And I think globally, the world feels like we have to take a lot of shots on goal, right, to be successful. So there are a lot of people working a whole lot of different angles. This is the one that, this is the one that we think is most likely to be commercialized the fastest.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McCool? Any questions from the members of our public? No questions from members of the public?
For Mr. Michelle, he needs about 15 minutes to put on his affirmative testimony.
Okay.
The board will watch.
10:07. What do we say? No new testimony after 10:30 PM, I believe, correct? So I think we can make it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Marcello, if you could just put on the record your educational background and professional background, your credentials in the field of engineering, please.
Mic's out. All right, we're good. Excuse me. All right. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I received my license in 2004. I have been in front of the Bridgewater Township Planning Board and Board of Adjustment over the last 10 years for multiple applications. And I've been accepted as an expert witness in the field of civil engineering. Most recently, I have three applications currently in front of the Board of Adjustment right now in the township.
Does anyone have any objections to Mr. Muscato's qualifications? Please proceed.
Thank you. All right. So I have two exhibits I'm going to put on the record this evening. I believe we're up to A2 for the record.
A2 and then A3, correct.
So for A2, we'll call this aerial exhibit, and it's dated January 7, 2024. And just to kind of give a, a little bit of background on the property, we talked a lot about what the DAC, it's Direct Air Capture Unit, is going to do. I do want to spend a little bit of time talking about the location of the facility on the property and just the property itself in general. So we are known as Block 165, Lot 2, or 6.409 acres. We're within your C3 zone, which allows office and research activities to occur on the property. As you can see on the aerial exhibit here, this is the 2020 state aerial that we're looking at as the background with north being up on the plan. You've got the North Branch Park to the west, the North Branch of the Raritan River, just off the left side of the sheet there. You have Milltown Road running in a north-south direction. Property outlined in yellow, like I mentioned. And then we have the Conrail tracks or the railroad tracks that are actually on our east side of the property, running in a north-south direction as well. To the south of us is some existing commercial development, and then the north is some vacant land. And we have residential townhouses and single-family homes to the east. As far as the development on the site goes, as mentioned, we have the 17,717 square foot building, which has been repurposed from what was an original industrial building to a sports complex a couple of years ago, I believe it was cheerleaders at one time, and they were dance. And now it is the research and development facility for AVNOES, as they mentioned. The existing site received minor site plan approval three years ago for, I'll say, upgrades and modernization of the property. That included the exterior of the building and interior improvements to this building. The site was, the parking lot was milled and repaved. The lighting was replaced and upgraded with LED lighting. Landscaping was installed along the frontage of Milltown Road as well as in front of the building. New ADA parking spaces were put in as well as ADA access to the building. A new water line was installed down Milltown Road by New Jersey American Water to bring fire service to this property. And the hot box was installed in the front of the site. And all those improvements have generally been put in place. As Mr. Silbert mentioned, the sign has not been built yet, but the foundation is there for it. And so all those improvements were done as part of the modernization of the site with the hopes of attracting a tenant that we now have there as AVNOES on the property. So that, that's the general aerial layout of the property and, and looking at the site from a, a, a large view here. So now we're going to go to the next exhibit. And this will be A3 for the record. And it's entitled Site Plan Rendering, dated January 7, 2024. This is essentially a rendered version of my site dimension plan with the landscaping and, and additional information added to it. So it's, it's in combination of a number of sheets. So just to get into some of the specifics of, of the property itself, now we've rotated it. So Milltown Road is on the bottom, and north is off to the left of the site. You've got the existing building, the parking lot. The site has two access points off of Milltown Road. And generally, all the improvements that are shown on here associated with the building have been completed. The focus is the DAC unit itself or the, that facility, which is going to be located on the southern portion of the site. There's actually an area on the property today that's cleared. It's lawn. And it's, it's an ideal location for this facility to the south of the, of the building. It's actually, when you drive north on Milltown Road coming towards the site, there's some good vegetative landscaping that exists along the stream corridor here. There's actually some wetlands on the property. So there, they provide some good screening. In the wintertime, you see some filtered views of this coming north. But in the summer, this is heavily wooded with foliage, and you're not going to be able to see that from the, traveling north. Traveling south along Milltown, you will see some filtered views of this area because of the location of the building and the, and the gap in here. But generally speaking, the building and the trees along Milltown do a good job of, of screening this area from, from visibility. But you will see, you will see it when you're driving south. So the area that's in general, it's about 42.8 feet by 96.2 feet in size. This is the footprint of the gravel area that represents the entire facility, just, just over a few thousand square feet in size. And it's not all structure. It's, it's, it's the structure itself, which is about 1,000 square feet, but it's two levels. So that's the 2,000 square feet that's shown on the plan that we talked about floor area earlier. There's also a series of platforms and pads and, and additional equipment that makes up this, this DAC unit itself that's shown on the property. And it's actually designed with a gravel base around it. And what we did was we took the gravel and made it into a, basically a large dry well for stormwater management. So we've sized it such that the impervious areas of the building and the equipment pads, the runoff from that will be collected in the dry well, in that stone area and recharged back into the ground. It's not major development from a stormwater perspective. It's only minor development. But we felt we needed to address it because when we did the original site plan in 2021, we were only adding about 200 square feet of impervious coverage. So it was negligible. With this one here, we're adding a few thousand square feet of impervious coverage. It's going from 6.3% to 7 point, I'm sorry, 6.3, 24.1% to 25.6%. So we felt that we needed to address that per your ordinance to deal with the increase in, in impervious cover. So we're dealing that with the stone storage area onsite for stormwater runoff. In terms of additional utilities, there's electric service already onsite that services the main building. We're going to tee off of that service and run new electrical service to a transformer for power for this facility. The sizing hasn't been determined yet. We'll work with AVNOES and the utility company when we're ready to do that. But in terms of the process water that we're talking about here, the distilled water, and it's about 1,200 gallons per day of flow. And when you break that 1,200 gallons per day down, it really comes out to 0.8 gallons per minute, which is per minute, which is not a lot of water when you get to it. And when you break that into CFS from a stormwater perspective, it's 0.001 CFS. It's really a minimal amount of flow. But what we're doing to handle that is, there is some tankage on site that'll store it, depending on how they process it, but there's going to be a 3/4-inch HDP pipe that we're going to install from the facility and connect that into the storm drain in Milltown Road. And that'll just take that water and put it into the storm drain, which ultimately makes its way into the stream. There'll be no impact to a storm runoff because it's such a small amount of water that's coming off of this facility. And we felt it better to put it into an inlet as opposed to putting it to the surface because it's going to run year-round. I don't want to have freezing issues if it gets onto pavement or anything like that, so I want to put it, put it into a storm drain so it's in a stable discharge location going into the stream that's there on the property. We are proposing some landscaping around the facility. We have seven additional trees we're putting in the front of the facility, and then some shrub massing along the southern side of the facility. We are cognizant of the fact that this is pulling air in and pushing air out. We don't want to put anything that was going to block or interfere with the intakes of air going into and out of the facility. So we're putting those vegetation more on the western side of the site. We also have, because this is going next to the existing parking area, we're proposing some bollards for vehicle protection. So if a car were to, you know, drive forward inadvertently, there'll be some bollard protection there to prevent them from going into the facility. There are no curbs on the parking lot area in this part of the site. It's just pavement to grass. So we have those bollards. In terms of lighting, this is going to be, as Dr. McCool mentioned, it is a facility that's going to operate 24/7. There are going to be five LED lights that are going to be installed on the facility, 15 feet high. More so for the AVNOS personnel to be able to safely navigate around the facility. It's not for working on the facility at night. Those lights don't have the kind of levels for that. If something happens, as Dr. McCool mentioned, they'll deal with it the next day. But the lights are there for being able to navigate the facility in the evening or at night, especially in the winter months when, you know, nighttime comes early. So we have five lights we showed on our lighting plan, LED lights. They're going to, they have the ability to be dimmed, like you see now with LED parking lot lights, so we can control the lighting levels. But because of the locations of those lights, basically at the four corners and one in the middle, we do have some, I'll call it spill-over from those lights onto the six parking spaces that are adjacent to the facility here. And because of that additional spill-over, your ordinance requires 1.5 average foot candles in parking lot areas, and we are actually increasing the lighting levels in those spaces from 1.5 to 1.8. That's why we're asking for the design waiver from the board for that little slight increase in light levels there. There's going to be no impact off-site. The closest residence is a few hundred feet away, the railroad tracks are elevated on the backside here. So those lighting levels basically are dissipated, and we meet your ordinance requirements at your property lines. There's no impact to off-site properties due to those slight increase in lighting levels. There was mention of sound attenuation, I mean, sound attenuation, sound impact from the facility or noise. We are going to comply with the state standard, which is the nighttime decibel level of 50. So the facility will comply with that. So let's just put that on the record now, it will comply with that standard during the evening hours. As far as any additional permitting goes for the project, we do, we did apply to Somerset County Planning Board for their approval, and we will need a Soil Conservation District permit because we are disturbing more than 5,000 square feet between constructing of the facility, the electrical line, and the discharge line. So we're going to apply to Somerset Union Soil Conservation District for their approval for their certification as well. In terms of, I know there's a question about parking, and for the AVNOS employees, since they are going to be ramping up employees on site over the next 18 months, the site has 61 parking spaces. It was designed based on the, you know, the one-per-300 requirement for office research, has more than adequate parking to handle that increase in employees that are going to be coming to the site over the next 18 months and hopefully beyond that. I think that essentially covered, oh, just one last thing. In terms of the bulk zoning standards, whether we treat this as an accessory structure or a principal structure, however the board wants to look at it, ultimately, it still complies with the setback requirements of the C3 zone. Lock coverage complies, floor area ratio complies, building setbacks comply. Height, the ordinance is 45 feet, this is 35.2, so it complies with the height requirements of the zone. So it meets all the, all the standards of your C3 zone from a zoning perspective.
Just a couple of questions. Did you talk, is there fencing or anything?
Oh, yes, that's correct. That was brought up as well. So from a fencing and security purpose, purposes, there is going to be a six-foot-high fence that is going to be around the facility, chain link fence. There'll be gates at various points around the facility for access to the equipment and to the stairs that go up to the second level. But it'll be a six-foot-high fence for safety and security purposes around the facility.
And then in terms of, you did touch on landscaping, but is there, in your opinion, any types of, any additional screening necessary for this facility?
No, I don't believe it's necessary. We have, with the landscaping that's been put on the road now that's out there, plus the existing vegetation that's there, it will be, you know, it won't be completely screened, we won't be able to see it, but it'll be mitigated in a sense that it won't be right in your, I'll say, view line as you're driving up and down Milltown Road.
You'd really have to look for it, you'd have to make an effort to look for it.
You have to look past the building to the, past the parking to see it back there. If you're driving south, north, you will not see it.
You made a site visit today, is that accurate?
Yes, we did visit the site.
Okay. And then you also handled the 2021 application, the amended site plan application.
Yes.
Based upon your visit to the site, did it look like the improvements were carried out based upon the 2021 approval, and where the conditions met?
Yes, from my site visit today, it looks like the majority of the improvements were put in place. I didn't count the shrubs that were out there, but it looks like they've been put in place, and it seems like everything is in order. I believe they actually have a final CO on the building, so everything's been closed out, I think at the township level, but Mr. Burke confirmed that. But as far as I'm aware, everything's been done, except the sign, of course, is not installed. Eventually, we're told by the owner that'll be put in at some point in the near future.
And then lastly, you confirmed there's adequate parking. Parking obviously complies with the ordinance requirement, is that correct?
Yes, and the parking lot was restriped, and even though it was snow-covered, you could see the striping underneath parts of it.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Silver, thank you, Mr. Muskel. Any questions from our board?
I have two questions. First, are there going to be cameras on site?
Yes.
So will the, I know you said that there's a residence behind, or the closest residence, will the camera capture that, or will it?
No, the camera will, the cameras will just be focused on the facility. And there's the railroad tracks with the grade back there, they don't, you can't see the residential homes that are far behind it.
Got it. And then I know you said you'll comply with all the sound, will the residents hear the system?
Given the distance to the homes on the far side, they won't hear the system. It'll be more background noise at that point.
Got it.
A few hundred feet, if not more, from this facility to that.
Got it, thank you.
Federal aviation basically allows 65 dB. Federal aviation allows 55, 65 dBs.
Okay.
So 50 dB should be at least acceptable to every county.
Thank you.
Would you say the sound is comparable to an air handler from a building?
Right, correct. An HVAC unit on the building is comparable, comparable to.
You mentioned that it's kind of a 3/4 PD pipe there. Is the, would you say the water runoff from this, right, that's going into, it's going into an inlet, is it going directly stored into the dry well?
No, the process water is going to go into the inlet, which is going to eventually drain into the stream. The stormwater runoff is going to go into the dry well system that we've designed around that'll ultimately infiltrate into the ground.
And the water that's produced from the unit, would you say that it's, would be comparable to what a large air handler would be producing as condensation during the middle of a hot summer?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would put it to condensate water, really, you know, especially if you have a few hundred thousand square-foot office building and you have large HVAC units, it's comparable to that in terms of, in terms of runoff volume. And then sometimes that water may go directly into a sanitary system, or they put it directly into a storm system, so it's comparable to that.
Okay. Let's see, answer my question about the fence. Those are all the questions I have. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions, I think, which some of us, some of you could address. Do you have any outdoor storage containment containers, drums, things of that nature?
Sorry, sir, could you repeat the question? Sorry, could you, could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Drums and solvent.
Solvent?
Yeah, solvent. Acid, base.
Absolutely not.
Glosses, things of that nature. Any toxic or hazardous materials?
With this? This, no, absolutely not.
Flammables?
No.
Put us all propane in there?
Nope. Nope, no. I mean, okay, sorry, sorry, sir. We do have a laboratory, right? And in the laboratory, we do use some solvents to do wet chemistry and things like that, but we're totally in compliance. This unit has nothing like that.
Concerned about spill containment.
There will be no spills.
If I may. Last month, a plant about a mile away from where you are had a spill, which contaminated the water in Bridgewater.
We smelled it, too.
And it took weeks to clear up, so I'm a little concerned about that.
First off, I don't know if that, I mean, our laboratory is not under investigation here. Should I talk about what goes on in the laboratory? I mean, I'm happy to address it. I don't know if it's germane to the hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would.
Consult my counsel.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I think that, I think that you've, Dr. McCool, I think you've actually answered the question. You said that you're complying with all, all state requirements, that there's no, there's no hazardous materials being used in association with this component to the property, and that you are an R&amp;D facility, but you've represented that the facility is using the utmost care.
Absolutely.
The drawing number one says you have a wash station for trucks and equipment. Where is that located, and what are you doing with the wastewater?
Drawing one, you're referring to. You're referring to the site plan?
Drawing number one, item six.
The only thing I could say to a wash station is, we're required under, it's not even a wash station, it's during construction for soil erosion measures, if we have any sediment on vehicles, it has to be cleaned before it goes back into the public road. But I'm not seeing a note about wash stations, I must be missing.
Okay, let me read it to you.
Oh, here we go. Yeah, cleanup and wash down of trucks and equipment shall be required before leaving the, that's during construction, that's for construction mitigation purposes.
I understand, but what are you dealing, how are you dealing with the wastewater from the trucks when you wash off a truck or bulldozer?
That's, that's addressed by the site contractor, they, it just runs off into the, into the grass area, or captured if it's heavily sediment-laid, and they'll capture it with some filter or filter bags.
Drops on the ground.
Yeah, but it's, it's.
Have you ever seen how greasy a bulldozer is?
Yeah, but it's.
Hydrocarbons?
It's part of the wash-down process for construction vehicles, it's part of, it's part of.
And you just feel comfortable with all that on the ground?
It's allowed under the Soil Erosion Set-up Control Standards. If it's, if it's heavily laden, if there's a leak of grease or equipment, that has to be cleaned up before you can let the vehicle leave the site. So if hydraulic hose, brakes, or if there's a fuel leak, then that's a spill contamination that has to happen during, during construction. But otherwise, if you have a vehicle that is just washing sediment off the wheels before it goes on to the, on to the public roads. A bulldozer doesn't go onto the public roads, it'll go onto a tractor-trailer and be carted off-site.
I got a problem with that.
I understand, that's the typical township mitigation note that's on our plans.
I understand it's on your plan, but I still got a problem with dropping hydrocarbons on the ground, willy-nilly.
I can bring that, I can look at that.
Grease, gasoline, diesel fuel, these trucks, these bulldozers, tracked vehicles.
I understand your concern, but again, those things, it's part of the process when a vehicle leaves the site, if the wheels aren't clean, it has, they have, the sediments between.
That's when it's off the site, but I'm saying it's being left here in Bridgewater on our property, the dirt, the contaminated material.
If we're talking about that, I think we're talking about a contractor who's going to be using their equipment to construct the site. Again, that equipment has to meet state standards for what they're using on a piece of property, so it can't just have fuel leaking onto the site or oil or grease leaking. Contractors nowadays have to maintain their equipment in such a way, and I think we're dealing with a pretty sophisticated type of construction here, that we're not going to be using somebody that's not going to be qualified to do this work.
Is that, is that a, is that a standard note that's included in, is this note specific to this application? And I'm, I just, I don't know the answer to that, if that's why you're raising it. Like, have you, have you not seen that note before? I'm not suggesting it is specific to this application, or isn't, I don't know the answer.
There are ways to handle it, but I can't offer you the suggestions. You would have to discuss that possibly with Mr. Burke.
We certainly have no problem with dealing with that as part of construction mitigation process.
And, okay, moving on. I noticed there's no sprinkler system on the skid.
Correct, it's not a sprinkler.
Okay. The building, is the building sprinkled?
Main building has a sprinkler system in it. I don't know the extent of it, but we put it in when the water line was extended to the site three years ago. There is a sprinkler system in the building, I don't know what it covers, but it's there in the building.
And just off the top of my head, any pressure vessels or exothermic reactions?
Absolutely not.
The only, sorry, the only deviation from atmospheric pressure is a subambient pressure. Subambient, so that means below atmospheric pressure. So we do pull a mild vacuum on the system. And the other thing was, pressure vessels and exothermic reactions, there are zero reactions, there are no chemical reactions happening in the process.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Okay.
That's all I have for now, isn't it?
Question for our board engineer, if possible, Mr. Burke. If I recall, is there not a conservation easement on site?
Good question, Mr. Chairman. I don't know, I don't know that there is. Rob, do you know if there's a conservation easement?
I don't, I don't think there is a conservation easement on site.
I know there are some environmental constraints, there's wetlands on, not, there's environmental constrained areas, there's wetland areas on the southerly portion of the property. I don't, I don't know that there's a conservation easement. I'm going to take a look at the plans here, though.
There's some stream easements on the southern portion of the site, but I think they're off the property, looks like they're just south of the property line. There's a sanitary easement.
Correct.
There's a storm, there's a stream easement there, sanitary sewer stream easement, sanitary sewer easement. No conservation easements on site, I can tell from looking at the plan.
Something come to mind for you? Did you think there was?
I was just recalling, because the previous application's somewhat fresh on my mind. I might be mistakenly with the, with the stream easement, so he's.
I think that's, that's likely what it is, then.
There was a, there was a roadway dedication.
Wetland and the flood hazard area.
Be referring to from the 2021 application, which was a significant portion of the property.
Currently, where the pad is or will be, what's there at the present moment?
It's just lawn.
It's just lawn, okay. Mr. Burke, I was questioning whether or not there would be something that would prevent some type of runoff in that area, such as an easement, that's, that's why that came to mind there.
No, I don't think there is, Mr. Chairman. It's a lawn area now. One of the questions that I raised, or that we raised in our memo, was whether there were any disturbances being proposed to wetland or wetland buffer areas and flood hazard areas. I don't know if, Rob, I don't know if I heard you testify about that.
I forgot to mention that, but thank you, Bill, for bringing that up. There are no disturbances of the wetland transition area. There, there are no disturbances of the wetland transition area or the flood hazard area, um, line itself on the plan.
Those were all confirmed via an LOI, is that what I heard?
Correct. We had gotten an LOI from the state for this, for the wetlands, and we had gotten a flood hazard area verification a couple of years ago as well. They're still valid.
Okay.
Looking at the tax map, there's not a conservation easement, there's a sanitary easement.
We heard previous testimony that the, there would be a drywall constructed, or it would double as a drywall essentially. The, the drywall, will that require maintenance every so often, as some typically do?
You treat it like a normal drywall system, so you'll have to make sure that it's functioning properly, keep it clean and, and maintain it in that regard. It's an, it's almost an open air drywall as opposed to one that's buried in the ground, so a little bit easier to see and maintain.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wang?
I have a question about the, do you know how high it's, uh, the railroad track?
How high, what?
Railroad track.
Oh, the railroad tracks. Um, I think they're in the order of about 15 feet, I think, above the, the property elevation, the railroad tracks. There's a good difference in grade elevation back there, about 15 feet. It varies a little bit as you go across the property, but about 15 feet.
That, that sounds good to me, because the light you mentioned about 15 feet on the building, right?
Yes.
That, that wouldn't be there, whatever on the other side.
Right, the tracks will block the, the lights themselves. Yeah, and, and the existing building is higher than this facility anyway, just to point that out, but the lights are equal to the track height, roughly.
So another question is, um, I know the new building is, is, you know, it has a building part, has the facilities. Is that a reason, you know, is, is putting this, uh, or, you know, direction or intention? Can we just move like 100 degrees, you know, make the, all the equipment, all the pipes towards the track?
The orientation of it has to do more with just maintenance and access to it, so in terms of its, its layout. Turning it actually, what happens is, we do have to respect, um, the, um, I'll call it the approximate flood hazard area, approximate New Jersey flood hazard area limit line, so I can't really turn it. I have to keep it in the orientation it is on the property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wang. Any other questions? Any questions from our professionals?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a couple of questions for Rob. As far as this, the site improvements that are required, did you testify that everything has already been done under the prior approval and that for this application, there really is, is, is nothing other than the building of this facility and the discharge piping? Is there anything else that, that-
Correct. I believe everything else is done on the, on the other site plan, except the sign.
Right.
And, and I, and I think then what we're dealing with here is the construction of the DAC structure.
And then as far as the prior approval from 2021, there's nothing being proposed right now that would in any way contradict any of the prior approvals or, or conditions of that approval?
No, and if, if, if it, you know, for the board, those conditions can carry forward as, as well, or they'd still be in effect if the board were to approve this.
Okay. When we talk about the, the drainage and the runoff, you have the runoff related to the 2,000 square feet or so pad area that's being proposed for this DAC unit, which you testified you're proposing to manage that with a drywall, essentially. But then, as part of the process, there's discharge of what will be distilled water out to the road. I think you said 1,200 gallons per day.
Right.
And that's a byproduct of this process. How do we know that that is clean water? Maybe it's not a question, how, how do we know it's clean and it's distilled? Does, you know what I mean? Like, if that's going to be discharged into a waterway, is there any?
I mean, I'd have to defer to-
You know what I mean?
To one of these gentlemen to-
We, we've tested the water from our other facility, which this approximates that process, that water is distilled quality. We also-
And I would say our startup- Our startup plan, when we're doing commissioning, would also be to have tankage on site where we're collecting the water, and we'll do the appropriate testing, and I don't know what the regulatory environment, or I don't know what the regulatory stuff is, but we will absolutely, so, before we discharge one milliliter of water, we'll, we'll be testing the water and making sure that it is, that it is suitable for discharge to the waterway. And if, for some reason, it is not suitable to, for discharge to the waterway, we will take it off-site and have it appropriately treated. We don't anticipate that happening, but we, we're, we want to be good neighbors. We don't want to put, do anything bad, so we will make sure, and part of our game is risk mitigation, right? So we will absolutely make sure that the water is good enough.
Yeah, we can work with, with you, Mr. Burr, and, and to your satisfaction that the, that the discharge of water doesn't pose any risk, whatever testing is required.
Do you object to providing your water test results? Not looking for anything proprietary, but just some certification that the water's clean before you start putting it in the township storm system? Yeah. Yeah, and I look for anything cheap, but just, you know, enough to satisfy Mr. Burr, you know, that the water's clean.
And, um, just one kind of follow-up to that. So let's say the system goes down because it, it needs some type of maintenance or new parts or materials. Do you then retest the, the discharge water or the process water to make sure that it hasn't become contaminated in any way through the process of, of repairs? Does, if that makes sense?
It absolutely, it absolutely does make sense. So, like I said, risk mitigation is, is, is part of this. And so the answer to your question is not a blanket yes, it is situational. So what goes down with the unit, what is replaced in the unit, et cetera, et cetera, would dictate our need to, to, to retest the water. So for example, if we had to put in a new condensate pump, right, which is what's moving that water around, or, you know, replace the head on the pump, or do this or do that, something that's in contact with the water? Yeah, of course. If we had to replace a new fan for moving the air, then no, right? So we have to be pragmatic, right? Every time we experience a shutdown, if that shutdown is not really directly impacting the produced water from the system, then I wouldn't feel the need to test the water. That, okay.
If, if I could just ask a question, so this is distilled water, that means it's demerolized?
Yeah, I mean, so basically, it's like a, it's like a dehumidifier, right? So, or air, or air conditioning condensate. So we're basically just taking the water out of the air.
And how much water will you be dumping per week or per day?
Don't say dumping.
Or not?
Bad, bad connotation. Discharge or, you know, whatever, about 1,200 gallons a day at full ramp. So like when we're up and fully operational and continuous operation about that. There are some variations with temperature and, and, uh, not humidity level so much because of the way we control it, but 1,200 per day is about the max. And, and then, Rob gave you those kind of numbers in CFS and everything, it's pretty-
So the demerolized water, um, would that have any kind of effect of leaching minerals from the ground or from any pipes or something of that nature?
No. I mean, it's going to be running through stainless steel and then through, um, and then through plastic, yeah.
Directly into the waterway?
Yeah, I mean, the, the level, I mean, it's not like ultra deionized water that can actually pull electrolytes away from things like that, and it's also a small amount. So if you put a small amount of, say it was very, very clean water, like laboratory deionized water, the kind of thing you would use in like a biotech lab or something like that, if you took that small amount of water and put it down the storm drain, by the time it actually got to the waterway, it would be full of junk anyway.
Thank you.
Junk is also bad, but it would pick up minerals and it would, from, transiting from the storm drain to the water.
Any other questions?
You good?
Mr. Burr, did I conclude your question?
That's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Thank you.
Sorry, Matt, any questions? Yeah, I, I had a quick question, if possible. Does, is the unit, can it be controlled remote, remotely? If needed, okay. And if there was something that took place in the local atmosphere or, or in the air, if there was a fire, can the unit be turned off to prevent obviously taking in compromised air?
Yeah, we would, we would certainly want to do that.
You would certainly?
So we, so, you know, it's not part of this because it's not really part of the, part of the plan, but a weather station that's doing some level of monitoring of, you know, particulate matter and various things like that. Should there be a forest fire a little bit closer than the one that was way up in Morris County or wherever it was? There's one down here. We definitely would want to shut the unit off because we wouldn't want to inadvertently pull in a bunch of, you know, small particulate matter and like, you know, partially combusted organics into the system, because that would just gum up the works.
Perfect. Okay, and one last high-level question. Is there any advantage to running a unit like this, a DAC unit like this, close to major tributary like the Raritan River, which is nice and close?
Any, it, it benefit?
Is there a benefit? Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty. Sorry, it's getting late for me.
Yeah.
No, I don't think there's any benefit in terms of performance or anything like that by being located close to a waterway.
Are there any members of the public that wish to ask any questions? There are no members of the public. Okay, then I'll close the public portion for this witness and potentially this meeting. Mr. Silbert?
Chairman.
Any more witnesses?
We do not have any more witnesses.
Okay. We don't have any more public. Okay. Uh, let's see. Conditions and requests.
Well, the relief being sought is amended, uh, site plan approval, amended minor site plan approval, uh, with one design waiver having to do with the foot candles, to permit 1.8 foot candles, where 1.5 is the maximum permitted. And the only condition that would be unique to this particular application is the applicant would need to provide some sort of, and I'll work on the language with Mr. Silbert, but provide some sort of certification in the test results of the water before they begin discharging into the system, just so we can have assurance that the water is in fact clean as the applicant represents it will be.
Mr. Peck, I just have one additional condition to add related to the, um, kind of designation of the structure as an accessory structure. It does have some implications on the bulk table, so I would just request that the plans be revised to show the setbacks for an accessory structure and all of the other, um, impacts it had on the FAR as discussed. So the reduction in the FAR essentially to what exists there today, because it won't contribute to, it won't contribute to the FAR.
A question for our board engineer, which doesn't necessarily apply to this, but going back to Mr. McGuire's earlier concern regarding the washing of equipment and whatnot, how, how does the, the township regulate that type of situation when it comes to construction phase of the site plan?
So the, the note, actually, that Mr. McGuire was referencing is from the township's code. The township has what's called construction mitigation measures that are required of any project that's being constructed in town. With that particular issue, it really falls under Soil Conservation District. Normally, you would have with any development a tracking pad, if you've ever seen like a stone entrance onto a private development site, that the main point of that comment or requirement is to not allow debris, material, sediment that's caught on, on equipment and trucks to be brought out onto a township roadway. So it's, it's meant to stay on-site. Now, depending on what they're washing down, there are certain requirements to contain it and dispose of it properly. Typically, if it's just, if it's just soil buildup that's caught on tires, it's typically knocked off on the construction site and left on-site, um, because presumably that's where it generated from. As far as, you know, to Mr. McGuire's point, if, if we have, you know, an, an oil spill or hydri-, you know, a leak of, of that nature, then it's got to be handled much more carefully. But if it's just a typical construction equipment, we're just making sure it's not being tracked off-site onto a public roadway. And then we have, you know, between, between the engineering office and soil conservation, there's normal inspections that take place, depending on the site, could be daily, could be weekly, just checking in to make sure that, you know, the typical standards are being requi-, you know, followed. But that's, that's generally how it's handled.
And clearly, the construction equipment needs to have compliance as well, be compliant with, with respect to its machinery and its operativity and all that, right?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? Close that portion of the meeting and open it up for deliberations. And with that, I'll start with Mr.-
There should be a, um, motion. It should be moved, moved and seconded, and then the motion should be deliberated.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
To?
That's Mr. Banga? Okay, that's a motion to-
And that's a motion to approve the application.
With the-
Subject to the conditions stated.
Yes.
That's Ms. Sikora, Mr. Banga?
Well, not, yeah.
We, we have to deliberate first.
Now deliberate.
First day.
Getting carried away.
Mr. McGuire, we'll start again with you.
I think the, uh, washing of the vehicles, of the heavy construction vehicles, needs to be fleshed out some more. There are ways to do it, but I'll look that up to the owner and his contractors, decide how to do it and present it to Mr. Burr for, uh, comment. But until then, I'm going to have to withhold my approval.
Mr. Wang?
Thank you. I, I think the site had, um, is, is, um, is well-designed, and I only, um, hope or suggestion is, uh, put more trees or, you know, landscape in front of the main building to block the, the veil, you know, from the park, from the, um, road, when we drive to, towards 202. Other than that, I think, you know, Bridgewater is, um, ha, 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 can have a very good, high-technology company here to benefit the, the world. So, you know, welcome. I, I, I support this. Thank you.
Mr. Atkins? I, I think this is a very interesting proposition. I'm excited at the prospect of Bridgewater being at the forefront of carbon capture. Other than the concerns raised previously, I, I don't have any objection at this time.
Mr. Chowdhury?
Yes, same. I'm excited, the new technology coming into, near our house, so hopefully, at least, and good luck, and everything will, will be all right. Other than what has been already set, and the conditions are met, so we should be okay. Very good technology, good luck.
Ms. Sikora?
I have no objections to the application. I'm excited to see what, what happens over the years. I appreciate you coming to Bridgewater.
Ms. Chardowitz?
Thanks so much for sharing as much as you could about your company and about the technology and giving us a science lesson, chemistry lesson. In a previous life, that was my dream. But we do feel honored that, to welcome you guys to Bridgewater, and, you know, I think you're a welcome addition to all the other R and D space or facilities that we have in this space, and, uh, we feel, you know, that we have really good talent here in this area. So thank you for choosing us, and I have no major objections.
Yeah, I think I would echo everyone's sentiments as well that I've heard here on the dais- in the dais. I think we've asked a lot of interesting questions tonight. Clearly, the board members are always keen on understanding what the environmental impact will be, especially within our town, which is why I'm hoping that during the course of this, should it get approved, you know, be continuously monitored, and work with our board engineer here, in case there are any issues, and move forward part of the conditions. But other than that, yes, I also agree that to see Bridgewater's, you know, a forefront of technological innovation, especially when it comes to one of the issues that's, you know, being, that's plaguing our globe at the moment, I would also be very much inclined to approve the application. Ms. Probst, cover your roll call, please. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Nay. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
At the half our planning board, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
What did he say? He said reduce carbon tanks, what did he say?
Sweet, sweet CO2s.
Mr. Choudry wants to make some jet fuel, right? Get some jet fuel?
That's right, the third-stage process.
That's right. Oh. Well, we didn't close the meeting, we didn't adjourn yet, yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll transition back to our application portion of the meeting, and Ms. Probst, we do have an update on the third application that was listed on the agenda this evening. Okay. So they basically had no impact on tonight's meeting whatsoever, okay?
Are there any other apps for the 21st?
Just a quick polling here, will most of the board be available on the 21st? Okay. Okay, unless there are any other comments, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Sikora, second?
I'll second.
That's Ms. Chartewitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night, thank you very much, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody.
This is the last day we can say thank you.
Yeah, when is that stop? Okay.
Busy, busy year for you.
Are you the 21st, too?